Call this Committee of the Whole and City Hall Council Chambers, 389 Spruce Street in Morgantown, West Virginia, 26505, Tuesday, November 26, 2024, 7:00 p.m. to order. That is also being broadcasted live over YouTube at the City of Morgantown. The Committee of the Whole meetings of Morgantown City Council are intended to provide an opportunity for the council to receive information, ask questions, and identify policy options in an informal setting. No official action is taken at these meetings. At this Committee of the Whole meeting, the following matters are scheduled. We will be starting with the Mountain Line Transit Authority Access Pass Program with a presentation from Maria Smith, our Executive Director. And can you come on up? And for those that are either watching at home or here in person on Zoom today, we have Deputy Mayor Jenny Celine and Counselor Wheeze Michaels. Maria, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and council members. So I have come here tonight to talk about the Community Access Plan. And I'm going to back up just a little bit to explain why we are where we are and why we are discussing it. Sarah Lee, did you turn the mic on so we can check?
So none of the microphones actually amplify, but we'll try to talk louder. Yeah, they're all for recording, unfortunately.
So the Community Access Pass Program was developed as part of a solution to the Route 50, Don Knotts Free Ridership Program. It began, the Don Knotts Free Ridership Program began in September of 2022, and it worked out really well. It was a good solution for the problem. What we were looking to do was to get people from the downtown area out to the social services that were out on Scott Avenue. Of course, with free ridership, over time, the ridership is going to grow because it's free and it's easy. So the first year, the agreement was 25,000. The next year, it was closer to 35,000. And then for the 23-year, the ridership was up around 87,000, which would have made that agreement close to 65,000. Now, we looked at this, and this was being supported by the social service agencies. And so the focus of their dollar was not 100% on people who needed social services. So we took a look, this is the geospatial data that we had looked at. We found that of the percentage of people using this free ridership route, the number of people who were actually either getting picked up or dropped off at the social service agencies was a small percentage of what the total ridership was, right? So the social service agencies were then paying for trips that had nothing to do with them, other people going to work, or people, there were nondestination trips in there as well. So this, yeah, so here are some of the issues we were facing with this. Number one was the sustainable funding. So typically, we would be collecting the 75-cent fare from our riders. That's part of our local match and part of our funding that we rely on. And so in this instance, someone had come in, they had subsidized it at 75 cents per trip. And then when that funding ran out, we now have to resume and go back to collecting the fares on that route. And so some of the other issues that we had, you know, was providing unnecessary trips. The other issue was there were trips being taken on that route that were covered by other programs, right? So you have free ridership on the route. It's really easy to get on the bus. Why would you pull out your bus pass when you just can board and not worry about the fare box? So if they did have, for instance, a WVU pass in their pocket, then why would they pull it out to swipe it when they can just get on? Okay. So as part of the next steps with this, obviously, we didn't want to just start collecting fares and, you know, leave everybody to have to deal with it. So we've been working together. Both the city and the county have been very great working with us in developing these plans. The goal here was to resume fare collection with the intention of contributing transportation support for those in our community who are most in need, right? So the goal was to get people who were in need in our community to the social service agencies, and we wanted to provide kind of some support for that to make sure they could continue transportation. So it's a two-part plan. The first part of it is to connect people to social services that are available in the area. So this is really simple, but this is what the Community Access Pass is going to do. So this, we're working with the city to develop different distribution channels to get those passes into the hands of people who are in the downtown area who need to get to social services. Once they get to the social services, part two comes in, and that's the program that we're working with, with the county. And that is to provide the layer of support for the social service agencies. So once those people get there, they have more transportation options. So I will go into the Community Access Pass a little bit more. So again, the program is a means to connect those most in need in our community to shelter, food, help and recovery, family services, healthcare, employment, job training, et cetera. This program is a more targeted distribution. We're going to be more certain that the passes are getting into the hands of people who need the help of social service agencies. It's going to also provide access to the entire transit system, not just Route 50. The part of the packaging with the program is also going to provide information about all of the social service agencies that are available in the area, and also give them route information so they know how to get around. Let's see. So that's a quick look at the Community Access Pass that we developed. They have been printed, and there is quantity in the hands of the city right now. So we're working with you all to get those distributed. Okay, this is a quick look. Do you want me to open it?
Yeah, sorry.
So this is a, just a quick look at the Access Pass booklet. So it's a two-page, or two-sided map. On one side, we're going to highlight the Don Knotts route and all of the services that are available along that route. It's going to let them know where they're able to get food and shelter and clothing, things like that, how to ride, how to get there. And on this particular route, the hours of service that it's available. The other side, sorry, keep scrolling backwards on me. Okay. So this is the other side of the map, and this just shows the entire system throughout our community, the services that are available, and the routes that will take you to get you there. At this time, some of the locations that we're looking to distribute these passes are through the Public Safety Building, City Library, through the City Ambassadors, the Police Department, and possibly through blessing boxes throughout the community. And finally, as part of this program is, we are looking to collect some data to learn a little bit more about our ridership here and the need in our community. So we will, once we get this program going, we will know the number of passes that were distributed, the channel through which we distributed the passes. Again, I mentioned some of those distribution locations, but that's going to be kind of fluid. We'll see what works and what doesn't, and obviously, channel more passes through the channels that work and less through those who don't. The city collective data, I believe that, if you want to speak, that I believe the city has put together also an online form of some sort together. Trip data specific?
Yeah, so any member who will be issuing these access paths through the ones that the city has purchased, they will collect a little bit of additional data, again, who is actually issuing it, maybe what resources those people are seeking, and the individual names, just so we can, we have our social worker who can sometimes connect with them in the case conferencing on individuals to see, again, how to connect people to maybe a longer-term pass that they may be able to utilize better.
And then, of course, we'll be able to provide data from the fare box. So we'll be able to provide the data that shows that the pass was used, the date that it was used, the time it was used, the route it was used on, the run it was used on. We can provide the bus and the driver, too, for that matter, if we find that important at some point. But, so we should have a good amount of data in this program. Okay, so the second part of the goal is then, you know, we've got the Community Access Pass. We've now got the social service agency clients out to the social service agencies. And now this part is to provide support for the agencies to continue to help provide transportation for their clients. So this one doesn't have nearly as catchy a name, but the Social Service Transportation Bridge Funding Pilot Program. So we worked with the county on this part of it. And so the city has been very gracious in supporting the free ridership on Route 50 since July. And so the county has come in and said, you know, we want to help out, too. And so we've developed this plan to provide this service. So on Route 50, the average ridership per month is about 7,000 trips. Those 7,000 trips at, per trip is about 4,690. So the county, the amount that was set to get the program kicked off was $5,000. That should provide close to seven, it's a little over 7,000 trips. And so we have developed, we developed two online forms for social service agencies to be able to get involved with this program. So the first form, they're going to sign up, they're going to put in the name of the social service agency, the services that they provide, and then the number of passes they want. Currently, there are single-ride and 15-ride passes available for that program. Once they have done that, we go through a process on the back end with the county just to make sure that this is an approved social service agency and that the number of passes are acceptable. And the other part of that that they're able to do is the county provides some funding for transportation for social service agencies already. So they'll be able to kind of help if, you know, a social service agency that should be using those funds for transportation isn't, they'll be able to kind of iron that out instead of having them use this program. So this is, this is the initial service, social service agency signup form. I think you all have a card that has a QR code on each side. We did that just for ease of access so that they can scan and go directly to our webpage that has this form on it. And then on reverse, it has the next form I'll go through. So the bridge funding, they're just going to provide it, their name, contact information, number of passes. And then this, secondarily, the county has requested that for each pass that the social service agency goes into the website and fills out information regarding the use of that pass. So they're going to let us know the name of the social service agency they started from, the serial number of the pass, the type of pass, and then we're asking for an HMIS number, if they have it. We're also asking for their original state of residence, and then the purpose of their trip. So that, again, is available on the QR code. That's on the backside of the card. It's just a mechanism to make it a little easier for them to access and provide that information. We have developed some materials for the social service agencies. This right here, we just finished up today, but we'll get this out. But this is a checklist for them to go through to see if their clients are eligible for any of our other programs. So it just goes one through the others, our WVU program, our military program, our SWORD program, our high school program, property tax pass program, and our Medicaid program. And then on the backside, it just has our base fares, just to provide that information to them. So for the second part of this, the data that we're going to be able to collect, you know, obviously, the information that I just went over, that's in both of those forms. So we're going to have the name of the social service agency, the number of passes that they distributed, the service that they're providing, the types of passes that were requested. So we'll get a feel for whether, you know, single-ride is better or 15-ride is better, and we'll kind of get a feel for that pattern. And then we'll also, and then the trip purpose and the intended destination from the second form. And then through our fare box, again, we're going to know the pass usage. So we'll know whether those passes were actually used or not. We'll have a date, time, route, run, et cetera, on that particular pass. So as we move into the resuming fare collection, we have reached out to, we've communicated with all of our drivers internally. We started there. We've also posted notices on all of the fare boxes. We did a press release. We have over 400 handouts that have been given out on the buses just to provide the riders with the information that they need and the fare information, and just to make sure they know that this is coming. So beginning on Sunday, we're going to begin collecting fares again with these two programs in place. And again, you know, we're ongoing, working with the city and the county just to make sure both programs are meeting the goal and, you know, making changes where needed. A bit long-winded, but did you all have any questions for me?
First off, let me start by saying thank you for taking the time to come up here. And that's a lot of work to have to navigate and collect and put this together. So I commend you, but I really appreciate that. And then I will look to the council and see if there's any questions.
It is a lot of work, and I appreciate the work that you've put in. I think it's going to be a lot of work for other city employees who are handing out passes. So I have concerns about that. I guess just seems like it's a done deal. So while I still have concerns about the program, a couple of questions, and I don't know if they're for you, Maria, or maybe for Emily, because after today, the city is generally closed, I guess, except for the Public Safety Building, through the weekend. So if someone tries to get on a bus on Sunday, and they can't get to H3 or wherever they may need to go, what is their option for getting a pass?
Our staff within our police department will be getting those passes. We just purchased them hot off the press today and picked them up today. So they'll, they'll be getting distributed to the police department and our city ambassadors, who will all be here on Sunday.
And the drivers will be able to tell someone if you need a pass today, the Public Safety Building is the correct place to go to get that?
They have channels to work on this, to make it as non-conflicting as possible. So there are things, tools that they have.
Okay. Another concern that I have, maybe, maybe it would be nice to have just some passes available on that route on Sunday that the city has already purchased, just in case, because it's a holiday weekend. Who knows what's going to come up? You mentioned that, yes, you mentioned. Um, you mentioned that, yes, you mentioned, the city staff is going to collect a lot of information when they give out a pass, and one of those was, like, they're gonna get the name of the user and where they're going. What if, you know, um, Joe is down on his luck and has to get to Salvation Army, but he doesn't necessarily wanna be on a list to say, like, I had to go to the soup kitchen kinda thing? Like, is there an option to remain anonymous for that type of stuff?
I'm sure there are many people who do not give their actual name, uh, when providing that information, um, so while we will be collecting it, uh, whoever is filling it out, if the individual says decline or, or something like that, it's just, it's, uh, we're only asking, um, uh, whoever's filling it out, um, it auto-populates the date and time, so they don't even have to fill that in. Um, the serial number on the pass, uh, we've got like four through 303, uh, so it's only, you know, three digits, uh, that they'll be asked to fill out, and, um, who, where it's coming from, it's just a click box, whether you're from MPD or the library or ambassadors or other, um, the name of the person, and then, uh, and whether or not they choose to provide their actual name, a fake name, or if whoever is really down on their luck and doesn't wanna provide their name and they say decline, and the issuing person puts decline or something in there, then it's still, you know, they still have the ability to hand them a pass, and if it comes up as to why they need it, that part of the questionnaire is optional, but again, it's just check all that apply, and if they don't check any, it doesn't prevent them from submitting that form, so, uh, it's only this long. There's only a couple of questions involved with that, uh, on our end.
If I may jump in on that question, the data collection is to find repeat users that would benefit more from the other passes, is that right? That was one of the goals for it?
For, yeah, for the cross, just to see, make sure that we don't have one person that's getting passes from all the different entities and...
Cause it'd be cheaper to give them the 15-ride or whatever, pass, if that were the case, right? In terms of financial?
Yeah. Yeah. Um, so the data collection is, it's twofold, you know, that it's gonna help us with that, but it's also gonna help us down the road to determine, um, you know, what, what we need as a community to put towards this program and actually have a dollar amount there to say, here's what we need in order to make sure that they've got transportation, um, so.
First of all, thank you for your thoughtful consideration. Uh, I really appreciate some of the aspects of this program. Uh, for example, the passes are available not only to go to HS House of Hope, but once given, can take a person to the hospital or to some other clinic or to some other locations necessary for their survival. And our intention is simply to serve a community and serve a particular group within that community that needs our help. So, uh, that part I am very grateful for. Uh, also too, my understanding is that this is a sort of a pilot program, it's a work in progress, so there's room for correction, and it would require cooperation of participating agencies to give us that feedback and, in truth, participate to make it a success. So from that point of view, I know that, uh, at least, um, I believe that you're, you're, you find that acceptable, and you are willing to work to see that this is a success for both the community and also for the transit authority. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. It has been helpful to have one-on-one contact with the social service agencies, um, and then also we're working really closely with the county, but it just gives a better feel for the, um, the ebb and flow of their clients and, and the different events, and so I think it's, the perspective is very helpful on it.
So these are single-use passes, correct? By at least our community access?
The community access pass is a single-ride pass, so we had contemplated doing a two-ride pass, um, but then you have the funds tied up in just that one pass, so it's easier to just hand somebody two passes when you need to.
That was gonna be my question, can we hand people two passes, uh, just back and forth?
Yeah, I mean, it depends on the situation. Ideally, you're, you know, giving them a pass to get somewhere where you know there's more transportation options, but that might not always be the case.
Yeah. Um, in terms of, so, I guess that would, like, lead into my next question, this is, like, um, in terms of, like, things like medical appointments or, um, employment opportunities, like, the one I think we talked about before was, like, somebody, some people that we, uh, interact with need daily, almost, I mean, five days a week, transportation back and forth from their job in order to remain stably housed. Um, so, I mean, I guess, you know, this isn't necessarily the program for them, maybe that's what we're saying, or, I just wonder, um, if there's a way to fill that gap with any of this, or if that's just not something we're looking to address with this program?
So I think part of the checkoff list that we developed is gonna help to fill a lot of those gaps, just because there's programs that we have that the social service agencies aren't aware of, um, but it's gonna help kinda go through a question, like, you know, are you currently employed? Maybe we can get you a property tax pass. Are you, um, are you seeking cut recovery or treatment from opioid addiction? We've got a program for that. Um, so it, it's gonna help fill in a lot of those gaps before they get to the point where they need passes from the agencies.
Okay, that makes sense. Um, and then, so right now, as of Sunday, and this is maybe more of a question for you, um, in terms of these single-use passes, we have them where?
Um, currently, two of the packets are sitting on my desk to be distributed, one is sitting on our ambassador's desk, and one is on administration, so I need to get those, uh, two to the library, I just, uh, or one of those packs to the library and one over to PD.
Okay.
Just didn't get there yet today.
So right now, it's like...
That's a tomorrow job.
Yeah. Sorry. Um, so, but right now, the idea is they'll be at the public safety building, library, and with the ambassadors, so...
Yes, though, we have a fourth group of passes sectioned off, um, in trying to figure out what the best location for those could be, um, and this is kind of where, uh, Maria said, kind of trying to figure out where the most passes are getting distributed from. Um, so, you know, we can have them in our administrative building, um, we can have them, maybe we do another one where we keep one even on the buses, you know, the bus routes, or we're kind of just seeing where the best place for that one to go is, maybe that's with our, um, dispatch, uh, that's in the public safety building 24/7, maybe just the three places for us, um, right now is enough, which is kind of gonna see where the passes go most quickly from.
Okay, thank you.
Jenny or Wheeze or Dave? Okay, alright.
I'm certainly in support of this program, um, and I've appreciated all the work Maria's put into it, and in part, it's because of its success that we've ended up at this point, because we got to the point where nobody would pay for the entire thing, so now we are figuring out how to kinda right-size it. So, here we are, and I hope that it works great, we can get the passes to the people who need them. And I appreciate everyone cooperating.
Alright. Thank you again so much for coming in here and telling us about the plan and where we can find the passes, and I appreciate it.
I appreciate your time, thank you all.
Have a good Thanksgiving.
You too.
Alright, next, we have Bolton Retirement of the Fire and Police Pensions with Jim Ritchie, the Senior Consultant. Welcome.
Hey, how are you? Happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Glad everybody could see me. Um, I'm gonna, so the, um, the city and the Fire and Police Pension Boards asked us to do a study. Um, for those that don't know, we are the actuary for the MPOB, which supports, um, the state premium tax distribution to all city, uh, municipality, uh, police and fire funds. So...
Sorry.
So what we were asked to look, just to give some background, um, the MPOB or the, actually state code allows for, for funding policies that you can fund your plans on, and the goal of these funding policies is whatever policy you choose, you have to at least make that contribution amount under that policy in order to receive the state aid. So it reduces your overall obligation as a, as a city. So the one is, you can have the alternative, which is your current policy, which started with whatever contributions were back sometime in the late 80s, early 90s, and each year you gotta make 107% higher than that. If you make that contribution, then the, the, the MPOB will release the state premium tax money, which is based on headcount, into the fund, so what goes into the fund is your contribution plus the state premium tax. The next policy is the standard policy, which they adopted in 1991, this is what we call an actuarial sound policy. So an actuarial sound policy means that you make what we call the normal cost, which is the cost to give them benefits each year, plus an amortization of the unfunded liability to get you fully funded in a certain amount of time. So the best analogy I like to give for this type of funding is to say you had a credit card with 10,000 in debt, and you were running, you know, a thousand dollars a year on, on charges, the thousand dollars a year would be your normal cost, so if you don't make that, your debt's gonna go up, then you have to pay the interest on it, and we would amortize the interest and say, how much on this 10,000, say, if you wanted to pay it off in 10 years, would you have to make? Say that might be 1,500, so your, your actuarial sound contribution would be 1,000 for what you're, you're charging and adding to the debt, plus 1,500 to pay off the debt in 10 years. So that's the best way I can describe a actuarial sound policy. So the standard method is you have to pay the normal cost, plus you had to pay, it started 40 years in 91, but it means every year you get away from that, you, it's less, so if you change to the standard today, you'd have to fully fund the plan in six, seven years, which would be a high benchmark to hit. The optional, they added back in 2010, uh, again, over a 40-year period, you have to fully fund the plan by 2050, so if you did that today, you'd have 26 years, you'd have to fund the, fund the liability over. And then last year, they added a new policy called the optional two, where again, you have to make the normal cost and then fully fund the plan in, which is now 29 years, 39 years, but it was 40 initially, under that policy. And what happens there is, we calculate the total contribution, subtract out the state aid, and that's what your contribution as a city would be. But the, sort of the caveat to the optional and the optional two is if you elect those methods, you have to close your current plan to new entrants, and new entrants have to go into the state municipal plan. And then just to give some history on this plan, so we look back from 2015, kinda every two to three years, so the police plan, actually, the funded status has decreased lately over time, 25, 24, 23, 21, same with the fire plan, it's gone from 27 to 24 percent, and the main reason for that is the contributions you were making weren't enough to cover the normal cost of the amount you were spending on the plan each year plus interest. So it just made the, the funded status of the plan go down. So we looked at three possibilities. One was just, what if you stay the course? What happens? What's that look like? What the contributions will look like going forward? Plus, what will the funded status be? When would you get to 100% funded? The next thing we looked at is, you keep the alternative policy, but as we see, it hasn't currently been paying enough to, to pay down the debt, so we would, we would, um, create a contribution that would say you'd pay the normal cost plus enough to fully fund it over what the optional two period is over a 40-year period. And then the third option is we would move to optional two right away, and we would freeze the plan, and we'd get a discount rate of six to six and a half, and we did numbers at six and a half. Right now, that's where you would be, we're actually, um, meeting with the MPOB in their board meeting in December to talk about allowing higher discount rates for the optional two, just to help cities, um, be able to afford kinda switching. So, looking at the fire plan, you can see the, the, you're kind of only making a little over a million now, but by 2035, that'll get to about two and a half million, and then it'll escalate to almost eight million before you're fully funded. And this doesn't assume any additional funds for anything else, that you're just making 107 where you are, it doesn't include any extra money for use tax or anything like that. And then we compared it to, um, the alternative than optional, which starts at a little over two and a half million and slightly decreases over time, and then the optional two, which again is two and a half million decreases over time, it's a little less. And the reason that's less is the, the state plan is cheaper, so we do factor in that you're gonna pay money to the state plan, but it's cheaper over time, so since you're paying for a smaller benefit, you're gonna save money over time. It's sort of like the credit card, the amount you're spending, you went from 1,000 to 900. Uh, kinda same pattern for police, you know, we get up to 9 million, um, and then the, the other two options would start at a little over three and kinda decrease over time. And then the funded ratio, under the alternative, since you end up making those higher contributions at the end, you'd be fully funded in 2050, um, but the other two options, they're designed to have you fully funded in 2063, so they'll always be fully funded in 2063. Same with police, kinda same scenario. Then we were also asked by the pension boards to look at, what if we made an additional five and a half million immediately in from kind of the use tax money, and where would the funded status get under the alternative and the other two options, and what would the contributions be? So, starting with fire, the contribution wouldn't go up as high, but it would still go up to about 6 million and be fully funded in 2050, uh, actually, I think a little between 2045 and 2050, and the contribution instead of being two and a half million would be about two, 2.1 million and go down over time. And then for the police, kinda same thing, it wouldn't quite get up to the nine million and get up to seven million before you're fully funded, again, a little before 2050, and then the contribution starting under the other two policies would start at about two and a half million instead of three and go down over time. And that's really all I had to present, then I just add, just our standards, adding assumptions we use to do the projections. So any questions?
Well, first, thank you for coming in here and presenting this to us and all the hard work that went into it. Before I do, I'm just curious, and it may not be, uh, the best question, but that doesn't take into consideration any growth in departments, does it? I mean, your projection?
So, yes, so we assume, eh, well, we assume the population itself stays stable, so if you have 60 people, we assume you keep 60 people going forward. Where we do assume growth is we do assume salaries go up over time, and payroll goes, cost goes up over time, so we're, it's what we call a stable population. So we are assuming over time that you're gonna pay more and more and more and more, and salaries, 40 years in the future, are gonna be much higher than they are today, obviously.
Certainly, yeah. Is there some sort of guideline for that? I mean, what are you projecting it to be?
Um, so we have a graded salary scale, I could look it up, um, exactly what they go, but we do an experience study for the MPOB every three years.
It's an actuary.
Yeah, so we look at history, what the history's been, and then we take that history to, and project that into what we think future growth will be.
And that's incorporated in your study?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
So, with what you're talking about, I just wanted to make sure I fully understand, based on the recommendation that I'm, that I'm hearing here, wherever out we go, no matter what happens, our current staff, their pension will not be affected in any way, like, it'll continue... Like it'll continue to be as promised, is that right?
Correct. Only new hires after the date that you make the freeze go into the new state.
The commitment we've made to our current staff, officers and firefighters, will be upheld?
Yes.
I just wanted to be sure on that.
As long as you fund under one of these patterns, yeah.
I want to make sure we fund it, yeah.
Yeah.
And could you share how many cities have made this type of change? Like, how many have, how many haven't? You shared some numbers with us the other night and...
So, right now, there are 14 plans under the alternative method, which incorporates seven cities, police and fire. If you give me a minute. I can tell you back in 2018, how many were...
I think you had mentioned there were just seven cities that have not chosen the option two funding method at this point.
Yes. There are seven that have open plans.
And this is, well, you keep doing that, but this is probably more a city question. But there are benefits with the option two method with the state funded program. And I wonder if you might be able to just summarize, just high level, what those might be that we currently don't have?
You mean differences between the local and the state plan? So, as Mr. Ritchie pointed out, our, our benefit in an initial 20 years is higher under the local plan. So, right now, 20 years, and I don't have the form in front of me, but I believe it's around 60%. And under the state plan, it would be 55% benefit. The state plan, depending on, there are other options. One, it becomes mobile. So if someone and their spouse is looking to relocate from Morgantown, they're able to potentially keep any prior years of service with another agency income here. Now, that works the same way, the opposite direction. So if they're here and they want to move elsewhere, they have that ability to do that as well. But under the state plan, there's actually options for vesting in less than 20 years. Ours is 20 years regardless. The state plan actually does create opportunities to vest if your age and years of service, at an older age, you can actually fully vest in your pension at a, less years of service than 20. Now, we have age restrictions on our, our fire, new employees for fire, but that has been lifted on police. So there are some minor differences. At the end, I believe it, it does eventually catch up. And the state plan, you actually, depending on how long you stay, and as long as you're able to continue doing your job, you actually can, I believe our local plan maxes out at 75%. And the state plan maxes out at 90% of your vital average salary.
The break point's 30?
Yeah.
32 years?
There is a difference in years of service.
There were, back in, five years ago, there were 18 plans that were alternative for nine cities. Took four less and, two less cities, four less plans now.
Based on what's being recommended, those, nobody's plan will change. They will continue to have their plan, is that right?
All current employees, it won't affect any current employees or retirees.
Okay, so, okay.
And what, what was summarized and sent out to council and our employees is, you know, right now, we are looking at a deficit of over $100 million in one, between the two plans. And when you're trying to develop a strategy to figure out how to fund that, you know, it's, it's not something, a small task to do. And so that's why we've been continuing to, we get Bolton and through the MPOB, their actuarial studies every couple of years. I think we have to bring them to council every couple of years and let you know the funding status of those plans. And, you know, for whatever reason, in 2010, there wasn't any kind of change made at that point. It continued being under the alternative method or shortly thereafter. And it wasn't until 2023, when another option became available, that there was another option to look at. And as we have continued to escalate, that 107% grows exponentially. And even with initial contributions between the two plans being, you know, if we said, okay, today, here's 11 million dollars, it still gets to a point where, you know, we are looking at a combined contribution between the two police and fire pension plans, where right now, we're making payments of a little over 2.5 million. That gets to a point where we are having to make payments, you know, well over 10. I don't know if somebody got dropped off.
Jenny's trying to get into the room. I think she probably has a question.
Do you mind letting the deputy mayor back in?
With the, with your mouse?
That mouse is...
Oh, yeah. Hit admit over there.
On the right?
Yeah.
Am I gonna like her question?
Sorry, I can't see whenever it pops out. But, and so that's what we've been trying to grapple with. We want our employees to make sure that they get the pensions that they signed on to, thinking that they were gonna get. And if we get to a point where, out of a 40 or 50 million dollar budget, 15 million of it has to go to pay pension obligations, it doesn't quite add up.
Thank, thank you. That's, I think that's an important point to make, that that becomes such a high percent of our budget, that it really requires drastic cuts in other basic services to meet the obligation of the pension fund.
And city council, a number of years ago, did influence the, the sales tax, which has been a great, has created a great pot of seed money to put towards the unfunded pension liability. We have those ready and waiting. Whenever Mr. Ritchie mentioned the, looking for on behalf of the pension board at those initial, you know, 5.5 million dollar contributions, that's where that would be coming from. And then the, you know, additional sales tax funds that would come year to year, trying to, even adding that to the contributions we're making already. You know, we get to a point where even with that initial, between the two plans, 11 million dollar contribution, and even with on top of the 2.5 million that we're making now, plus the 2.4 million that would be coming from the court of the sales tax, we would still have to come up with another $5 million, staying under the current method that we are, from some unknown source of funds.
Jenny, I know that you were trying to get back into the conversation. Ringing the doorbell. Did you have questions or anything you wanted to say?
I do. I just wanted to mention that this is an issue that's been going on since Stan Boroff's era, and that was one of the things that he mentioned to me. I, I never wanted to be the voice of experience, but here I am. I always wanted to be, you know, the exciting, new, fresh. But he mentioned, back in the day, I don't know if that's five managers ago, he mentioned that this is one of the main issues that we needed to handle over the coming years, that we didn't have the funds necessary to deal with it then, but that all of the other communities in the state were looking to how to handle this issue. It's been talked about with our state municipal league. It's something that we've talked about with each manager that's come in between. And this is the first time that an administration has had the nerve and the wherewithal to figure out a strategy and to bring one forward and to have the analysis done and to look to the future. And so I'm extremely proud of this council to entertain this and look at how we solve a problem that it doesn't, doesn't get us any little whistles and bells for right now, doesn't get us a new building, but it preserves something for our, our police and fire departments, our current employees, and it looks to the next set of employees with a really, actually a decent pension plan that allows portability and allows a higher pension benefit for more years of service. So here we are, looking at this. And I would say that as people who try to look toward the future and make sure that we aren't creating a hazard for years to come, this is a, a good move and I really appreciate us entertaining it.
So just for a point of clarity. So under the 5.5 million scenarios, if you look at like the optional two, so the two plans combined would be 4.5 going forward. That includes however you would use the 2.4 sales use money. So that would be 4.5 total you'd have to make if you use 2.4 sales tax money, your net, net out of general revenues would be 2, 2.25 for both combined? Just to make sure you understand that.
Well, and this is, this is something that's important because no matter how well invested, and I think that the current investment groups that are working on this, with the current pension plan, no matter how well they did, we could not undig a hole that big. So it's not anything on any current person who's working on investment. This is looking toward the future and what happens when you just can't, can't make enough to get over that hump. And create a viable plan.
Anyone else? Did you, I didn't know if you had something? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate all the hard work and...
So do we talk about this later? Or do we move it to the agenda now? Or what do we do?
It's actually not, not on to be moved yet.
Gotcha.
I think this is, just wanted to present council with this information. We've been working with our actuary and I know has been discussing with the boards as well. There's some information that we've been trying to get from the MPOB itself, and we've gotten some of that information back. And so we can bring it back in front of council when we have that information. I think that there's a couple of different ways that, you know, we can approach that. And maybe something that can be brought forth if council wishes to a future agenda in, you know, a relatively short turnaround time. It just, we wanted to make sure that this information and this report from Bolton was presented to you and very similar information has been presented to our current employees. That would be affected by this. I know that there's been some discussions, both between Mr. Ritchie and some of the pension board members. Some have reached out to me as well. So we've been continuing to have those discussions.
I appreciate the thoughtful consideration. Is there any particular deadline that we're looking to effectuate?
Well, the longer we put this off, the more expensive it gets. And so, you know, ideally, having something put into place. So part of the funding mechanism, looking towards this in the future. So we have the general fund allocation that we can, that we have been putting towards this and would continue to put towards this. Sales tax allocation, both what has been accrued since the implementation of the sales tax and the sales tax that we would anticipate going forward. And, and having, it does still leave us with a small gap in that funding. And so we would look in one of the funding mechanisms. It also, it takes into account essentially two other buckets. One would be a small increase to fire fees to help supplement that fund. And then the pension funds are sitting essentially in like an interest-bearing money market. I don't know if that's the right terminology. Our finance director's not here. He's out this week. But that would also be able to put those funds that are essentially being built on that towards these funds as well. So our fire fees do, if any change were to be done in fire fees, we're in the process of updating our system now. And we have to have those done. Any updates probably done in the next month or two to get those into the new system, to be able to implement them come July 1, 2025. Just because there's a lot of work that goes into, we're switching systems, but even if we weren't getting those updates into a system, usually takes a few months. So to create that, all the different buckets that would go into actually funding to be able to implement and get on a path to be able to fund that, you know, while there's, you know, no immediate time absolutely necessary, the sooner you do it, you know, it just helps in the long run.
And the one thing that I've learned, both with being on council and working with the municipal league, is there's a benefit to a financially sound approach to city government. And there are benefits that only a sound budget can provide. And I think we've been doing wonderfully well in some of the things that we've managed to accomplish. And I'd love to keep us in a position, I'd love to see Morgantown remain in that position. So thank you for your, for your efforts.
Pardon me, have, have we listed which cities have moved over to the new plan and which cities have not yet?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I don't think we said exactly which cities, Jenny, but the number.
Most of the cities, most of the seven cities that remain in their local plans, I think most of them are in a much better funding ratio than Morgantown is. Some of those are very small. I think there's only a handful that are, maybe one or two of those that are less funded than the city of Morgantown. And again, comparatively, we're a lot larger than those cities. I think the most recent city to make the change was the city of Martinsburg, just a month or a couple of months ago. So it, it's been something that our status of our unfunded pension liability has been brought up in, in our previous, by our previous audits, our auditors. It's been brought up when we have been searching for finance directors in the past. It gets brought up a lot as kind of like this kind of thing that nobody wants to touch or deal with because it's not, it's a, a lot to tackle. And again, there didn't seem like there was ever a strategy to tackle that until about a year and a half ago, so.
Do you want the names of the cities that are still in the old plan?
Sure, 'cause it's embarrassing, not, it's not embarrassing to be in their company, they're elite cities, but we should be doing better, just like they should be doing better.
So the cities are Beckley, Bluefield, Nitro, Princeton, South Charleston, and St. Albans. And South Charleston is the worst of the funded plans at 11 and 13% funded.
Again, our, our main goal is to try to get the city in a position that we can continue to pay pension benefits to those who have earned them.
Thank you.
It's time.
If there's nothing else, we'll go on then to the public portion? All right. I'm gonna open up this public portion to the rules subject made by council. And please make sure you have signed up. Say within four minutes, state your name and address. Stay within four minutes, state your name and address. And you start. First, we have Larry Hazely. Is that right? And I apologize if I'm reading of your names wrong.
No, that's actually correct. You're the first one that's actually said it correctly a long time. Yeah, my name's Larry Hazely, 96, Larry Lynn Lane, Morgantown, West Virginia. I'm actually a retired sergeant from Morgantown Police Department and I serve as a trustee on the pension board. So Emily just said it, that there's never been a strategy and that there's a lot to tackle. You guys tackled it. You guys had a strategy. It was back in May of 2019 when that sales and user tax went into place. If anybody's curious, that five and a half million dollar elephant in the room, doesn't anyone curious where that money's come from? It's from the sales and user tax. Okay? So that sales and user tax is an extra 1% that the citizens of Morgantown pay on top of the 6% sales tax. And not one penny of that sales and user tax has gone to the police or fire funds. You guys fixed it. You tackled it. It's just they chose not to put the money in our investments. If you want to know where that money is, up until about three months ago, it was in United Bank checking accounts, making 1.125% interest, which is not very good. They recently put it in a money market account, making over 4%, which is a little bit better. But a conservative estimate on our pension funds, and Jenny said it earlier, that our investor is doing great work. A conservative estimate of what we've made in the past year with our new investors is That's $11 million that's been in a checking account. Imagine what the compounded interest would be if our citizens who pay that extra tax would have gone into our investments and gone to work for us to make money on top of the payments. If you look at your minutes from the May 21st of 2019, minutes from your meeting, you'll see that it's defined, that that sales and user tax is an increased payment, which means on top of what the liability for the city would be. So that should have been, that extra 1.2 million dollars should have gone on top of your payments since July of 2020 to the tune of $11 million today. And the extra fun part is you tackled it twice. Because if you look at that ordinance, 733.15, that fourth bucket, city council has the authority to add another 25% to police and fire. If you chose, and we're not being greedy, if you chose to give the police and fire pensions an extra 25% on top of the 2.4 million dollars, that's, that's $4.8 million on top of the liabilities for four and a half years. Imagine where our fund would be. And these are, I have all of these numbers to prove it. If you would deposit the sales and user tax money today into our police pension account, it would go from 28% funded to 38% funded today. And imagine what that percentage would be had the city management placed that money into our funds. Imagine what the compounded interest would be on that money for over four and a half years. We hired Bolton to look at these numbers for us in a hybrid C way. I've emailed those to you. Please consider those. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have Matt Solomon.
Do I have to push a button? Good. Hi, Matt Solomon, 195, State Drive, Morgantown. I'm a retired captain from the police department, been retired a little over a year. I served our citizens for over 27 years in the police department and I'm still serving them because I'm a member or a trustee on the police pension board. I just want to reemphasize what Larry Hazely said. There was 5.5 million for us, 5.5 million for fire that sat for several years, a few years, doing nothing, doing nothing. If we did it now, big boost, big boost. Please look at what Larry sent you. One thing that really concerned me was when the deputy mayor just said, "It's done." That really concerns me because in her mind, it's done. I'm hoping in your minds, it's not done. Is this the better way to go? It's sounding good. It's sounding great. I don't really know if it is. And this is my livelihood now, folks. My only income, my family's only income is what I'm getting from the pension. My wife says, "Dad, oh, Mom, I got three kids." So I'm not blowing smoke here. I think you all really need to look at that stuff. Maybe that is the better way to go. Maybe it is in the long run, but I really didn't really appreciate that call just now at all because that worries me. That really worries me. Would the current system eventually bankrupt the city? I know there was concerns about that. There is concerns about that. Maybe it will. But once again, the elephant in the room, 5.5 million, it's been sitting doing nothing. We've also got 1/4 of 1% from the sales and use tax that could be set up for us. When I say us, police, us for fire. It might get us there quicker. It might get us there quicker than this other method and I apologize, I don't remember the title of it. And trust me, I want it to be 100%. I'm 51 years old. I'm planning on being here 51 more at least. I'd like to keep seeing it for a while and I'd like not to have to get back into police work. I did my duty. One thing about the state plan, the plan that's being considered, that you are only not now and I'm running on short on time. It's going to hurt staffing because I can get a year in, I can go somewhere else, keeping my pension. I can get a year in there, go somewhere else. Oh, they paid more. Oh, they paid more. Oh, they paid more. Oh, they got nicer cars. They, and that happens. With Carolina, we had a guy leave a few years ago from here. He wanted to go to the beach. Okay, great. He's been down there three, four years. He's on his fourth apartment now. The last time he changed because he likes this one schedule better. So we're concerned about staffing now? Yeah, I'm retired. Still my people, this is still my town. My family's been here for well over 100 years. We got cops leaving after five years, firefighters leaving after five years, even less. What kind of security, what kind of safety are we going to be providing? Thank you.
Next, we have Liz Cohen.
Hi, thank you for, for giving us the opportunity to talk. I am shifting focus to the Raleigh Lane issue. And what I would just like to convey is how, living in a very defined neighborhood, to have something done to us in terms of changing a, we have very limited access and egress and to change that Raleigh Lane and to, not to change it, to close it without any, any explanation, any idea of what the process is, what is going on, is very frustrating as a, as a member of a relatively small community. You know, these, that Mr. Ritchie and Ms. Maria were commended on how well they collaborated with all of their partners. And there was no involvement or collaboration with the neighborhood. And I would just like to say that before, and I know it's coming up this afternoon or this evening on the agenda, that before decisions are made about that Raleigh Lane area, that you consider inviting the community that uses that as a major access and egress point to participate in that process. That's, that's all I'm asking, is to have some, some of that same collaboration that everyone talked about with these other two issues, that you include the neighborhoods because we are the people who use it the most. I did try to call the city to find out what was happening, what the process was. And the person I got to said, gave me an email address and said that the reason that it was being closed was because of accidents. Now, I've lived in that neighborhood for 30 years and I can honestly say that it has, I've never been aware of an accident right there and there probably have been some, but, but nothing, no information was given to us. And I, I find that really heavy-handed and not very inclusive of our neighborhood, which is going to be the neighborhood that is most affected by this change. So all I'm asking for is some representation. Thank you.
Next, we have Brent Bailey.
Hi, I'm Brent Bailey, 901 Fairfax Drive in the Evansdale neighborhood. Before I start, I should thank all of you who are volunteers as elected officials because I can't believe you go through this as often as you do. But thank you very much for being here and listening. I think that, you know, the, the old adage, first do no harm is usually attributed to medical profession, but I think it applies just as easily to community planning. And being in the Evansdale neighborhood and looking at the closure of Raleigh Lane and even seeing that there's an ordinance under consideration tonight, without any consultation with the neighborhood, really seems to forget about what kind of harm might be done by suggestions that have been made without consulting the people who would be affected. I guess I, I really would like to know what problem makes this action a priority because those of us in the neighborhood are not aware. Often our requests, when we've asked for support to slow down traffic or to put in speed bumps or anything, they take years to resolve and counters are put out on the streets, some studies have to be done, and suddenly we're told, "Oh, we're closing this street." And to my knowledge, there haven't been traffic counts that have been done, there haven't been, been speed monitoring assessments that have been done. We don't know anything about whether or not there have actually been accidents or not, but no advance notice and, and just a really abrupt closure really underserves our neighborhood. We've got about 100 households in the neighborhood and I think that represents a significant constituency that really ought to be part of this decision-making. Patterson traffic was already a problem. Closing Raleigh Lane makes that problem worse. Getting in and out of our neighborhood in Evansdale has already been made difficult by the surrounding of, of the neighborhood with university roads and with the expansion of other roads and with the inclusion of additional stoplights. This closure makes that problem worse. It's a simple act, but it's really not a solution. I think that consideration of any ordinance such as what is on the agenda for tonight really puts the cart before the horse. It does strike me as heavy-handed, as, as Liz said. It's a little bit of a knee-jerk reaction when I think what we really should be asking is, if we do this, does this create harm for anybody and what are the ripple effects of this kind of action? So I would encourage before any consideration of this ordinance is made, that first, it should be postponed. Secondly, the neighborhood should be consulted. I think a survey of residents would be appropriate and create some dialogue that really looks at what are the traffic problems that exist for the Evansdale neighborhood as opposed to what's happening in one very short stretch of a road that happens to be beside Kroger. Thank you.
Next, we have Mark Thoman.
Good evening, folks. A lot of my questions were answered before I even walked up to this podium and I'm actually shocked about that. Ryan, as much as I'd as you like to see me, I'd much rather be home with my wife tonight, but here I am.
Good to see you.
Clearly, after hearing some of the dialogue here going on, can everyone hear me? That there has been discussions unbeknownst to pension boards, unbeknownst to the public, whether that be in executive session or not, with Bolton in regards to closing pension. I am shocked that the mayor herself said to close it after a short presentation here from Mr. Ritchie. Anyway, I've been a business owner in this town for 17 years. I'm also a member of the fire pension board. When this ordinance was passed, not a business owner, including myself, argued against it due to what it was going to fund. Both our police and fire pensions help the city. That's a cost to us that we either pass along to our customers or whatever it may be. I come to find out through the pension boards that this money that has been raised through this tax has not been used for what council intended. So when I ask my fellow business owners and when I talk to them about these type of things, one word comes out of their mouth: fraud. Why is this money not being allocated for what we were told? Now I come to find that there's a possibility of raising the fire service rate, 15% to help with such pensions. That's something that I have to pay as a property owner, a business owner. Is that money going to be used for pensions or is it going to be used for something else? We don't know. We can't get any answers. I've been on the pension board since Dan Boroff was here. And Mr. Boroff, when we had a budget surplus, when we had carryover money, took extra money and put them in police and fire pensions. We were one of the best-funded pensions in the state of West Virginia. That hasn't happened since he left. So when I ask these questions in the pension meeting to the finance directors, three of them, as a matter of fact, where this money is and how much money is in there, they've all left. Don't you find that strange? They've all left, three of them. I don't have an explanation for that. All I can ask is that you folks take a closer look at this. We have a fund manager now that is moving our plan forward, who has made investments that are almost unprecedented from our last financial management. Give us a chance to move this plan forward and get fully funded so we all get where we want. Now, a concern that everyone has, can the city itself sustain the two pension plans at the same time? I don't know. I do not see the city finances. I don't know. But that's a question you should all ask yourself. When we have a mechanism in place that was put in place by council through the 1% sales tax to fund police and fire pensions and it's not being used? Please take a closer look, please, and have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Next, we have Thaddeus Stoll. Can I say that, all right?
Yes, sir. Right over your way. Thaddeus Stoll, 1229 Corbett Avenue, Morgantown, West Virginia. I would like to ask the mayor if I could yield my time to Mr. Larry Hazely.
I'm sorry?
I'd like to yield my time to Mr. Larry Hazely.
I'm sorry, we're just one person at a time. We can't pass time along.
Okay.
I apologize.
Not a problem. I'll keep my message brief then. Just trying to reaffirm what my brothers and sisters that are serving on these pension boards have already done. They are doing their due diligence by working with these programs. They are looking at the actuaries and talking with people and the finance directors. I would like for you to look at the other side of this. I know you're hearing one message tonight and what that looks like. Please do your due diligence, talk with them, look at all the factors that come into play. State code says that these pension boards are the stewards of those plans and those monies. If we go beyond what their suggestions were, their ability to request certain monies to be moved to certain accounts, I believe that that is something else that needs to be looked into as well. The ordinance is clear. The city ordinance says that that money will be used for police and fire pensions for unfunded liability. If you were to create a new plan, there is no unfunded liability. So that money needs to be used for the current plan. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, we have Jason Nice Warner. Warner.
Good evening. Jason Nice Warner, 314 Butler Drive. I'm the Secretary of Treasure for the Professional Firefighters of West Virginia. I'm also a member of the Morgantown Fire Department. I believe what you're seeing here tonight, just listening to my brother's talk from the police department, is a, a lot of smoke and mirrors here. A lot is being said that the pension plan that we're in now is dying. It's not feasible. We need to go to the new state pension plan. But you're not being told everything that comes with the new state pension plan. One thing is, that plan was enacted in 2010. Just since... Just since last year, that plan did not have on job, on-duty disability with that plan. So, if a firefighter or policeman got hurt, and they could go get a income from, say, being a door greeter at Walmart, they didn't get a disability pension until last year, which the Professional Firefighters of West Virginia and the state FOP went to Charleston and fought for to get that put into that plan. Also, a few years back, each year, the accumulation percentage-wise for the new plan was two and a half percent. A few years ago, we went down and fought to get it raised to 2.75 percent. Still lacking the three percent, which is in the old plan we have now. Also, another thing you're not being told is with everybody in this new state pension plan, the state auditor has been going around, and each member, each body, the police and fire that are in those new state pension plans, get to take a vote on whether they want to be part of social security or not. So, that's going to be another added fee on top of what you guys have to pay. Also, off-duty disability in the pension plan that we are in now is five years. So, I can, you know, unfortunately, get hurt off the job after five years and collect a disability pension. The new plan is ten years. That is also something we've been trying to change in Charleston. So, I just ask you guys to look at state code, look at 822, the current pension plan, 822A, the new state pension plan. Do your research, do your homework. Don't just listen to one side of the story. The assistant city manager said this would be good for retention recruitment, something else that would be good for, for retention as a drop plan, Deferred Retirement Option Plan, which I believe you guys probably have never been told about. So, just like I said, do your homework, because are you guys going to be the ones going to Charleston fighting to get things changed in this pension plan, to make it whole as the current pension plan is now? I don't think you will be. I think it'll be the police and fire that have to do that. So, thank you.
Next, we have Daniel Horbacheski.
Hello again. Daniel Horbacheski, 664 Bel Air Drive. Appreciate the time again. I know I don't want to be everyone's ears with the same thing back and forth, so I just wanted to point out a few different things. When it comes to budgeting, I, not the, that's not my favorite thing to do in the world, is setting budgets and doing all that. So, if you're doing one for a city, I have to imagine there's a lot of work goes into it, so can appreciate that. I do, though, always want to be mindful of, of costs over time versus immediate costs. So, you can get a four-year mortgage, right? Your rates, your monthly payments are going to be lower over those month-to-month for forty years, but the, and the cost, whenever your mortgage is done, is going to be about double what you got the mortgage for, versus if you pay that mortgage off in about two or three years. Yeah, the payments are going to be high for month-to-month, but you're going to save a heck of a lot of money. So, digging into the, the real figures, the real costs, and the real savings, could be more than just what the monthly or yearly cost would be. Just wanted to check. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Jason Gano. Did I say that right?
Yes. Jason Gano, 1737 Fairer Champs for Morgantown, Virginia. I also work with the fire department along with the rest of these gentlemen over here and work with the police officers in the room. The current pension plan, the city council has, or city administration has failed to keep up in the last thirty years, obviously. There's plenty of reasons why. City managers of the past didn't put the money in where it was supposed to be, and here we are today fighting for it again. So, take a look at the information that's been sent to you, Larry, and maybe ask about option C, because there is one. Thank you.
Next, we have Mark Karas.
What care of asses? 2424, you're under Morgantown.
How do you say that again?
Care of asses.
Care of asses.
Yes, sir.
All right.
I'm the former fire chief for the city of Morgantown, recently retired three years ago, and I'm here just to reaffirm as to what you've been told from the police officers and the firefighters this evening. I'll get back seven city managers ago. That would be under Dan or Doug Fawcett. And that's where part of this problem began, because they quit paying into the pension fund. They didn't put their liabilities, they didn't fund their, their liabilities, and money was not put into the fund to keep it whole and keep it solvent. You, as councilman, have been handed a bag, much like you do whenever you come to a new job. There's always a bag that you get that has some things that you really didn't know about in it. Here's your bag. You have an unfunded pension liability of over a hundred million dollars. You haven't addressed it. You're now looking and look at it and trying to take it to a new plan, which seems to be, in some faces, a pretty good plan for the firefighters and it's a good plan for the employees and for the city itself. However, within that plan, you're under the old plan that we're under, our disability is at sixty percent. The new plan is at sixty-six and a half, sixty-six point six-seven, but it's precalled at age sixty. The old plan has joint survivorship. When I pass, my wife will get sixty percent of my pension for the rest of the time that she lives. The new plan doesn't include that. What's she going to rely on? My wife does not have a pension of her own. You're going to increase the fire service fee to cover the pension plan. Right now, last time I looked, the fire service fee covers almost sixty-six percent of the fire department's operational budget. You're going to raise that, again, you say fifteen percent, and put it on the backs of business owners like Mr. Thoman and other business owners here in the city of Morgantown. The fire service fee was never intended to fund pension liabilities. It was to turn around and provide funding for operational costs for the fire department at a rate of fifty percent. And if you go back to Mr. Boroff and look at the notes where that was devised from, you would see that. Not sixty-six percent, and definitely not adding another fifteen percent to it to help fund a pension liability that you should have addressed years ago. As Mr. Halsey has said, as the other firefighters, Mr. Nice Warner has said, there are other plans out there. There are other ways to take care of that. There's a lot of money put away in a bank account right now, earning scant little interest, where it could have been invested and put a better return on your money. As they said, that is written in code under, when you implemented the one percent sales tax. This is where that money will go, and it is still not there. And much like they had said before, when I asked the city manager, or not the city manager, I'm sorry, the finance directors that I've talked to, why that money wasn't put there, none of them could give me an answer. None of them. My belief is that it comes back to city hall. It's my belief that they want to turn around and make Morgantown not a great place to retire from. Maybe they do want to pass them on down the road, pass a firefighter down the road, keep you five, seven years, pass you down the road. That way, you don't have to worry about retirees anymore. You don't have to worry about having unfunded liabilities, because you won't have employees to stick around. Unfortunately, that's going to affect the safety of the citizens, the safety of the community, and the safety of my brothers and sisters who work in the field of emergency services. Thank you.
Next, we have Sarah Zegre.
Hi, my name is Sarah Zeg, and I live at 352 Oakland Street. No, no problem. I live at 352 Oakland Street in Evansdale, and I'm sitting here thinking that I should probably be considering my future a little bit more, but I might be so caught in traffic so much of the time that I only have time to think about the now. That's supposed to be a joke and a little tongue-in-cheek. What you have in front of you today is something that I think is probably more, more important in the scheme of things. Good luck to you. Thank you for your service, and I wish you all well in making these good choices for the people who have served us, and thank you for serving us. I lived in the city for sixteen years, and I'm a homeowner in Evansdale, and we are employed through the, my, both my partner and I are employed through the university. We have born two children in this community and served on various boards and, and even as an Evansdale entity, we've done city council, things for city council that I think only Bill Koecy and Jenny were a part of. But we're, we're in the community and we would like to serve the community, and I think there's a, something that's on, on your agenda tonight that really affects us in a, in a day-to-day way. I, and I, I say it jokingly, but so much that I've spent so much time, so much more time throughout the years being behind the wheel, and to have such a drastic shutdown of our access to our community, I think is, what's, what's horrible about it is, is not having be a, a voice in the choice or being consulted. I know various of us, including me, have called the city and said we'd like to be a part of this group, that it's being studied. A lot of things get studied for a while and, and that it would be shut down and then re-looked at, but we, we'd like to be a part of this solution, and we'd like to be a part of the discussions, and I really don't want to see that road closed, as much as I like to run and have my children run to the, to Kroger specifically, and I like to bike down there, although they've removed the bike locks, which is unfortunate. I, I think that still getting access to and from there via, to both ways, to that area with a car is, is important to all of us in our neighborhood. We've lived there long enough that most of us can say we remember that our access got cut off by the university. We used to have access out egress and ingress from our community. The university shut that down. I don't even know what year, but it's been within fifteen years. And then, not only that, they, you know, built all these places where people are living in a public-private partnership, and when I was serving on the Boat Park Board, I was documenting how much of our percentage of the city coffers, how much wasn't coming into the city because these public-private partnerships happened. That may have funded this, who knows? And, and now, the traffic has gotten so bad on both sides of our community that if, if there's a problem in this community, I think it's egress and ingress from our little neighborhood, and, and I don't want to blame the university. They could be part of a solution. I'd love to talk to them about some of these problems that have escalated, and, and I'd love to be a part of a group that would talk about a better option to get down to Kroger and back from Kroger. So, I appreciate you including, and I would say, having this on the agenda tonight is, I wouldn't support it, and I think having a sign that says maybe "local traffic only" until we actually are able to just talk with the stakeholders, because we are stakeholders in Evansdale. Thank you.
Next, we have Ann Bailey Berry.
Hi, good evening. I am Ann Bailey Berry, and I'm a resident of Evansdale. I live at 920 Riverview Drive. So, good evening to each of you, to the firefighters and policemen and my neighbors who are here. So, I'm a twenty-five-plus-year resident of Evansdale, which I can tell you has included more trips than I would care to count to our little Kroger. But I'm here tonight because I would just appreciate it if you could help me understand why there were so many abrupt, why this was such an abrupt change to access to Raleigh Lane, who made the decision and why. We weren't alerted, we weren't informed, nor were we consulted. And so, those of us who live there, I think, are really disappointed that we've been, as you've heard tonight, that we've been excluded from the process. Doesn't seem like it's been transparent at all, and we haven't had a chance to even have a discussion about it. I, too, made several calls to the city just to say, "What is going on? Why is this happening?" I got responses that were, that ranged from, "I have no idea, you'll have to call back," to, "I don't know, I think maybe there were wrecks." So, in the work that I do, if I make a change, or even if I make a proposal, I am required to present data and to present a case for it, and so, I guess I have an expectation that that would be something that you would also support. So, I guess to close, I want to thank you for your service. This can't be easy, and I admire you for it. I hope you will support our participation in the process, and I hope you will support two-way access to Raleigh Lane, and thank you.
Next, we have Charles Campbell.
Chuck Campbell, 324 Sunset Beach Road in the county. I am the president of Morgantown Firefighters, Level 313 here in Morgantown. I'm not going to beat the hammer any harder than it's already been beat, but I do want to emphasize a few points. When we're talking about the number of 5.5 million, I want everyone to keep in mind that that's per pension fund. So, that's actually eleven million dollars that's been sitting in a bank account instead of in the investment funds of the pension. We all ran those numbers, so we know where those stand. As the chief said, and a few other individuals said, Mr. Boroff worked a little bit early in my career, I'm aware of that, to try to fund this pension system, and then somewhere along the line, the ball got dropped. I think it's insulting to try to raise fire service fee and put this on the taxpayers' backs for the lack of effort that's been done from city administration all these years that we're now standing here having this conversation. What I would ask is that each of you educate yourselves on the picture as a whole. We keep getting told that there's no funding method for the existing plan, therefore, we don't have a choice. We have to, we have to change over and we have to implement the new state plan. I, too, was troubled by the statement by our deputy mayor that it seems like a decision's already been made. But I haven't heard yet the plan of how we're going to continue to fund the existing plan, all the while funding a new plan also. So, I'd be really curious to see how that works out, because it seems to me like it would be a lot easier to focus on one plan and try to fund that plan and reach solvency a little bit quicker than it would to fund two separate plans. For as long as, well, the fund has to exist until everyone in it currently is done collecting out of it. So, we have some individuals in the plan right now that are probably twenty, twenty-one years old. They've got another twenty years till they, if we're talking, at the earliest. Secretary of Treasure Nice Warner also brought up the social security aspect. There'll have to be another funded liability, let's say, in the new plan. And there's one other point on the top of my head I wanted to make, and I can't remember what it was, but I'd really like to see how we, how we plan on funding the two plans.
Just, just for the record, my projections included funding for both plans. Just so you know.
Now, I'm curious where the city's getting the money to fund those plans. We, because we have the one percent sales tax.
During, during public portion, we don't.
Then we put the twenty-five percent on, and there's another twenty-five percent available also. So, there's another avenue that we can look at, the funding, so I'm guessing. So, I just ask that each of you educate yourselves on the big picture and not just what you're being told by one side. Talk to the pension boards, just as we talked to Bolton and etc. All right? Thank you.
I appreciate your willingness.
Yeah, my apologies.
That's policy. Uh, thank you. Next, we have Suzanne McDonald.
Hi there, I'm Suzanne McDonald. I live at 911 Fairfax Drive in Evansdale neighborhood. And I just want to back up just a minute. I don't know if you got it. So, Evansdale neighborhood has a lot of, there's an avenue, so there's Raleigh Avenue, and then there's another street, and, but in between the, the main streets, there are alleys, right? And so, these alleys, Raleigh Lane is an alley that runs all the way from Riverview Drive, and then historically, it ran behind a little school, and then it goes all the way to Kroger. Okay? So, that's the history of Raleigh Lane. It was an alley, okay? So, I mean, over the, over time, it's been, it's been a little weird, right? Because W has run and taken up, you know, space in the neighborhood. In fact, there was a nursery school that our kids went to, and, and, you know, you had to drive down an alley, but, you know, this alley is, is used by the neighbors, as you've heard, and is supported to the neighborhood. heard, and is important to the neighbors. And it's become even more important as WU has cut off access. So Raleigh Lane is a city street, and we expect it to remain a city street open to the neighbors both ways. And so, you know, but the good news is, you don't have to spend money to create a sidewalk for WU students. You can spend it on these pensions. So save your money. Don't redevelop this into some pet project, okay? Save your money. Keep it the way it is for us. Because if you change, even making it a one-way, it's going to hurt us. Okay? So that's all I have to say.
Next, we have Amy Hirschman.
My name is Amy Hirschman. I live at 901 Fairfax Drive in the Evansdale neighborhood. Thank you for your time today. I appreciate it. I just will be brief. I would support an altered both-way access on Raleigh Lane. Thank you again for your time.
Next, we have Hannah Carey.
Hi, my name is Hannah Carey. I live at 408 Junior Avenue, but I'm here in support of the Raleigh Lane remaining two-way accessible to the Evansdale neighborhood. On top of that, I don't know if I'm allowed to comment on two different things, but an unbiased opinion I've acquired listening to everybody else talk. I'm not going to pretend to know about how pension funds should be managed. One thing that did stand out to me was you mentioned that a new state plan would in part make it more difficult to get on disability, and that is deeply concerning to me in any job, but particularly in a dangerous job. I don't think that they should have you put on plans that make that more difficult. Yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Next, we have Emma Berry.
Good evening. My name is Emma Berry. I live at 920 Riverview Drive in Evansdale. I actually made my notes for tonight on the back of my grocery list, which I think is very fitting, because I'm here tonight to talk to you about access to Raleigh Lane, which is how my neighbors and I get from our homes to Kroger and back. And so thank you again for your time, as my neighbors and I have all spoken about this. Three months ago, we were abruptly denied access, vehicular access, to Raleigh Lane, and without warning or process. So we've got these big concrete barricades that were put up, and we were not consulted about this decision. And I stand before you tonight because I appreciate the work that you do, but I also believe it comes with kind of great power and responsibility. And for you to have that positional power and authority, I ask you to use it to include members who are directly impacted by those decisions in the process of making them. As you've heard tonight from my neighbors and I, not only were we not consulted in that initial decision, but we have been directly impacted on a daily basis, and we are not in favor of any changes to that road. We ask that it be maintained as two-way vehicular access. And so tonight, I hope that you stop any further decision-making about Raleigh Lane, that you include Evansdale residents as part of further decision-making. And for what it's worth, in case I haven't made it clear, I would like for that to be two-way vehicular access going forward. Thank you so much for your time. Have a great evening.
And last name on the list, Katie Semino.
Yes, Katie Semino. I live at 900 Hawthorne Avenue. And I also, like my neighbors, cannot overstate the importance of Raleigh Lane remaining a two-way access road, and strongly urge you to keep it that way. I have lived in Evansdale for over a decade, and while I know traffic in Morgantown generally can be bad, when this closure of Raleigh occurred, the traffic in our part of town was significantly worse over that two-to-three-month period. In a town where traffic is difficult, to say the least, every available route should be used to its fullest extent. That alley is extremely useful for those of us in the Evansdale neighborhood for both ingress and egress. It helps reduce the traffic on Patterson as well and the surrounding roads, which is very evident due to the traffic buildup that occurred when the alley was closed for those two to three months. If there's a concern over pedestrian safety, pedestrians should be encouraged to utilize the staircase that is behind Kroger. That's what my husband does when he takes our children on walks in the area. Moreover, to further any other pedestrian safety concerns, while keeping Raleigh open as a two-way access street, signs could certainly be put up to direct pedestrians to the staircase that is not very far away from Raleigh Lane. Speed bumps, one or two speed bumps could be included on Raleigh Lane. Again, pedestrian safety is an issue. I, like Liz mentioned earlier, while I'm sure there have been accidents in the 10 years I've lived in that area, have never known there to be many vehicle accidents. I've never known there to be any vehicle accidents or pedestrian vehicle accidents on that road as well. So perhaps these graduated steps, speed bumps, and/or signs could be taken before the drastic measure of changing this road and no longer making it a two-way access street to the residents in that area could be considered, especially in light of the residents not being considered. Thank you for your consideration.
That's all the names on the list. If there's anybody else wishing to speak at this time, you can come up, say your name and address. Once, twice. All right, I'm going to close the public portion. First, for items for discussion, we have an ordinance authorizing a rate increase for the regional transfer rates. And I'll wait one second.
Don't we first about trash fees or food trucks?
I'm excited about food trucks. All right. For those watching at home, we have our representatives here from Republic. If you'd be so kind as to tell us what we're talking about here today.
Sure. So introduce myself. My name is Tom Berry. I'm the general manager of Republic Services. With me is Cassie Mercer, operations manager of this area, including the Fairmont Collections Company, as well as Mountaineer Transfer Station, and Renee Shepley, who is our municipal sales manager. So we're here essentially to talk about the Mountaineer Transfer Station. So the Mountaineer Transfer Station is a waste and recycling transfer station that operates out of Morgantown Industrial Park. It's located at 2130 Rail Street. Republic builds that facility in 2010 and has maintained it ever since then. And we come, at this point, kind of as a follow-up from meetings we've had over the past year with the city manager's office, as well as the city council, as we implemented or requested through the West Virginia Public Service Commission, a rate increase at our transfer station in 2023. So to give background, we are fully regulated by the state of West Virginia, the Public Service Commission. We don't determine our gate rates. They determine them for us based on our operating costs. And in order to increase our rates, we need to essentially show that the business is losing. And then the state does financial calculations to determine what adjustments need to be made to essentially maintain a certain ratio. So we went through that process in 2023, and the state authorized approximately a 30% increase in our waste rates going into the transfer station. That was the first increase that the transfer station had had since 2013. So we've always been obviously very sensitive when it comes to rates, but it hit a point that we could not properly keep that facility open and operating based off of the deficit it was operating at. So the state did grant that increase. And as a secondary kind of legality of managing those rates of when a disposal site increases their rates in the state of West Virginia, the users of that facility, be it trash haulers, contractors, really anybody that brings waste to recycling there, can file for what's called a Rule 30E. So a Rule 30E is a filing through the Public Service Commission in which the hauler or the collector can request an automatic pass-through. Since the collection rates are also kind of locked and managed by the Public Service Commission, the state needs to authorize that increase to happen. So all of our collectors receive that increase at the transfer station automatically, including our own collection companies paid that new trash rate. And then going forward with that, we are passing through that increased, increase through all the users that bring their waste into the transfer station. So during that Rule 30E process, we filed to state that our disposal rate has increased, therefore that we have to increase our collection rate. They do an internal financial calculation to determine what that correction, that essentially adjustment needs to be in order to kind of make the slate clean across the board, that the collectors are not getting more money than they're entitled to, but still makes the transfer station, the disposal site, whole at the end of the day, so they can continue to operate. So following that transfer rate increase, Republic Services filed for a Rule 30E to increase its following rates in all of the services in the counties that it does service in this area that utilized Mountaineer Transfer Station. And the Public Service Commission authorized a surcharge of $2.43 for residential customers and 4.17% for commercial customers. And that is roughly based off of weights that were given to the Public Service Commission during that auditing process of the Rule 30E following the transfer station. So they essentially take a calculation of how much waste is coming in from the residential side, calculated out by how many residents are serviced, and then they determine a rate that kind of covers this cost to make sure that it's equally dispersed throughout all users in what we consider the waste shed, which is multiple counties within West Virginia, and making sure that that cost is equally spread out throughout everybody. So because the city of Morgantown is a private municipal contract, the Public Service Commission cannot forcibly authorize an increase to be automatically passed through, which is why we requested to negotiate this increase. As we did implement this increase, all county residents in late 2023, as well as all of our commercial entities, everybody from Marion County, Harrison County, and essentially surrounding counties in the waste shed, all took those increases in November of 2023. And so we started negotiating to see if we can implement those rate increases in the Morgantown contract as well. And I believe we met with city council originally back in, I believe it was January or February of this year, to request those increases to go through. But there were service issues that were brought up at the time. So we agreed to essentially set up monthly meetings with the city's office to establish improved lines of communication of any issues that are brought up, that we continue to kind of follow up. Despite service issues not necessarily have anything to do with the transfer station increase, but again, as good partners, understanding that costs are always a sensitive topic, we want to make sure that everybody gets the maximum amount that they feel they can get for it. So the Holland Company absorbed those increases since November of 2023. So we've absorbed about a quarter million dollars in losses. Absorbing those increases while we negotiated and tried to improve our service and our reputation here. So we've been having those meetings since March of this year and addressed everything that we believe has brought up to us. So we are back here kind of asking if we can authorize, at least a vote or lack of terminology, of moving forward with that authorized increase as well.
Just because there's a lot thrown out there.
Yes, sorry.
What is the increase specifically?
$2.43 per residential home per month, in 4.17% increase on commercial contracts within city limits.
Any questions?
We initially signed a new contract with you all early last year. When did you initiate the process from the PSC to increase the rates?
When we filed for the Mountaineer Transfer Station, I don't know the exact date, probably in Q1 of 2023.
So the same quarter that we signed our contract in which we spelled out exactly to our customers or to our citizens and residents, the rate increase that they could expect for the next five years. I can't fathom that you all did not anticipate when we signed that contract, that this additional increase was going to be requested, and that it never came up during our negotiations for that initial contract.
So because we're regulated by the state, we can't anticipate what any filings will do. We discuss filings every year at all of our facilities throughout the state of West Virginia of what we can file for and what we can't. We can't estimate, you know, whether we move forward with those filings or what the Public Service Commission would determine. So it would not be in full faith to kind of say, you know, this is what's going to happen, because at that point, it's so early on in the process, we wouldn't have known what would have happened to it. Because we can make filings at any point and the state can simply just say no.
I certainly understand that, you know, we couldn't assess the dollar amount or assume that it was going to happen. But I don't recall it ever even coming up during our discussions. We will be filing for an additional increase, and we will see how that goes. Or, I mean, it just flat out never came up. I was very unsettled on our contract when we signed it, and I think if we had said it's going to be an additional $2.50 a month on top of that, I certainly would have considered it even, even more. I can appreciate that you all have been absorbing that cost. But, and I appreciate, I know that you all have been meeting with the city manager's office regularly, but I haven't necessarily gotten less or complaints. Generally, not in my work. We worked to handle the 4:00 AM pickups, which I appreciate. But certainly out of second and sixth ward specifically, the South Park and Greenmont neighborhoods, I get a lot of complaints. And it's, maybe those aren't making it to you. I encourage folks to contact Carol to have that brought up. And they are still like, well, it never does anything. It doesn't matter if I call, it doesn't matter who I talk to, it just, so I think that maybe some of those are probably still going unreported. And I understand that you all can't fix something that's unreported, but I don't know. I felt like a broken record reporting every single one, every single time. I've been trying to encourage others, like, it means more if it comes from you and not me. But I'm still getting a lot of complaints, and I'm just not sure there's a great will from Morgantown citizens to pay more for the service that they're receiving.
I would encourage residents to call, because I've had several.
I encourage them to call.
Oh, I know. And that's why I want to reiterate to those that may be watching, we've had several, I've had several people call where their trash wasn't picked up, and they called Carol, and the next day you all were there to pick it up and show good faith. So I would echo the concern where the increase in cost was not brought to our attention earlier, and we had discussed that. And I appreciate that you all have met with our city management monthly to discuss that. So as the flipside of that, I would point out that, as you continue to tell Carol, I would also tell everyone to call Carol, because you all have done a great job in terms of, at least in my ward, I can't speak for everyone, in terms of picking up the trash for those neighbors and working with me with the garbage cans. That was a huge area of concern for me personally. But I digress from the original conversation, which is about the rate increase.
Sure. I mean, I still had a neighbor that hadn't, I mean, they got their trash can a month ago. And I've heard that quite a bit amongst all the same complaints we've had for lengthy amount of time. I mean, it doesn't, I've not noticed like a precipitous change in those personally. And I mean, that's anecdotal, and it's hard to take those in without broad base of data and all that stuff. But I haven't heard some like precipitous But I haven't heard some like precipitous change in service. Again, like you said, doesn't have much to do with the funding for this transfer station though. But for us as council people, what we have to justify to people is why are you increasing my rates again when our trash service, when we don't like our trash service? And I don't know, I, I can't really justify that. And I guess my question would be if we're absorb, you know, I, I think one of the big things we had said, or I had, I had thought about last time this had come up is if this was unsustainable before, will it be uns, you know, why is it still around basically? And so if we're able to absorb a cost of quarter million dollars, I just wonder where that's being made up, right? And if that is being made up, like is it actually unsustainable? You know, our PSC is not known for denying rate increases at all. So I, I would echo the concern about being told this beforehand, not necessarily about like, here's exactly, but did you have like a bunch of pending requests or a PSC or was this the only one? I'd imagine it was the only one because they usually grant everybody's rate increases out of hand for utility companies. So yeah, those, my, my two questions would be, how is it that you're able to absorb the cost of quarter million dollars? And if you were to continue to absorb that cost, what does that do to like your bottom line? What does that do to sustainability of the transfer station? And number two is, did you have any other requests before the PSC in terms of rate increases or was this the only one when you had brought it?
So can I ask you, repeat the, what's the second question?
Did you have any other requests in front of the Public Service Commission?
Back when we filed the, the one with the Mountaineer?
And, and when we asked for, or when we had approved another contract.
I would have to look, I mean, we make various filings. I oversee four separate businesses, one of them's Short Creek Landfill, the Wheeling Hauling Company up in Ohio County, as well as the Fairmont Hauling Company down here. I can't remember if I had filed another Rule 42 inquiry or not exactly at the same time. Generally, we do, we review all of our financials in the first quarter of every year because it is entirely based off of previous year's financials and businesses that are operating at a deficit. We usually do an evaluation internally, then we hire an, essentially an external auditor to kind of confirm our findings and if we're eligible to pursue a rate increase and then actually do one. So some of them, all of them start at step one, most of them never make it to the step of filing. So I, I can't stay specifically of what we were all looking at back in the first quarter of 2023, but it's not abnormal to be looking at our financials to, to see if we're operating into loss that we need to address there. You know, when the, when the filing was made with the, the Rule 42 originally, the city manager's office didn't know that we did make that filing again, and the communications were, you know, simply is we made the filing, we don't know where this is going to go. This can go on for a year, two years, we, you know, or it can get denied, you know, just as it's filed. And that's kind of simply as we leave it because we can't really speak anymore to what's going to happen with that post filing. So it was obviously no absolute intention to kind of file it in secret. You know, obviously the city manager's office was aware that we made the filing, but there was nothing to discuss at the time because there was no decision made on anything. So to address the first question on the, you know, the, the, essentially that increase being absorbed by Republic, we essentially, we didn't adjust anything. We took the loss. It, it hit down to the bottom of the line, which is why I'm as persistent as I am kind of annoying with this question, to kind of bring this up to kind of right-size our business. We, we don't, you know, adjust another part of our business or cut something else to make it work, you know, always operating in good faith with, with all of our customers and all of our contracts. If we have to take a loss in good faith for a short term to continue the conversation and prove that, you know, we are good for our word for it, we can do it. You know, as far as how that adapts, the Mountaineer Transfer Station, the transfer station was built for the city of Morgantown. While it services greater Montagnalia County as well as Marion County, Harrison County and several entities, even in out-of-state area, the majority of the services, the reason we built it was for the city of Morgantown to serve residents in a more economical, closer way. It operates, as far as I'm aware, of the only successful single-string recycling platform in this part of the state. And it operates in, you know, less than 5% contamination rate. We've maintained really strong operations there to, you know, maintain what we, what we call, you know, the flagship of our, our recycling program in the state of West Virginia. I would say it's probably the best one that does operate. And we operate it very, very tightly because we need to make, we, we want to make sure that everybody's getting that value. We operate with six people. We internalized that operations in 2022 because of consistent issues and so we hired our unemployed, purchased own equipment, kind of internalized things as much as we could and, you know, trying to improve that value every year, investing in the building, redoing paving, you know, litter fencing. It's beautiful, I mean, it's beautiful what the transfer station can get, it's a great facility and we take a lot of pride for it. So, I mean, essentially we're absorbing the loss and the effort that hopefully we can, you know, keep that funding going and we can keep the transfer station open in the long run. But I, I can't say in the long run if, if the transfer station, you know, would be continued to operate at a loss of whether we would continue to operate that or not and, you know, if it did close, the waste would be having to taken out of state and I don't know what would happen to some of our other options like recycling, so.
Do you have a question right now?
No.
Good.
Good. All right. I think we need to move to. All right, have a question with the agenda?
I do, I do.
All right, move that to by acclamation, I guess. All right, move to the agenda. Thank you guys for that, all that information.
Yeah, appreciate it.
I was having trouble unmuting. May I make one short comment?
Yes.
I would be voting in favor of this and I would be voting in favor of this because we have made our point that we would prefer that we have all of the rate increases be brought up at the same time, but that now we have made that point. It is something to be able to recoup someone's appropriate costs and that means that regularly there will be increases. And so for this type of thing, it's a separate service, the transfer station, and here we are. So I would be voting in favor of it just for the record.
Thank you. All right. Did you have something?
No.
Okay. Next we have an ordinance amending section 105.42 of the city code. As the same applies to compensation of election officials and other expenses.
Mayor, the city clerk is not here at the committee of the whole meeting, so I can describe the effect and purpose of this ordinance in our stead. This, the ordinance, section 105.42 of the city code provides the compensation for the, the workers at city elections. It is set up in parallel to the state code, which provides for county clerks to set compensation for workers at the elections that are handled by the county. And the clerk's office is proposing to increase the fees paid to those workers to be commensurate with those paid in Montagnalia County to the, the workers at county elections. So for the election commissioner and poll clerks, the increase is proposed to be from a $115 lump sum payment to a $222 lump sum payment. There are also changes made to be consistent with the county practices and the state code for the sort of delivery services that some of those officials may perform in transporting ballots to and from polling places. And the city clerk would ask the council to move this to the agenda.
Just a question, the lump sum payment is for what period of time?
It's for service on election day.
Just election, well, just election day, not the early voting?
We do not have a provision that I see other than for, we have training sessions, so we'll have to send that question to the city clerk and get back to you. Yeah, there's, there's nothing in the current ordinance provided separately for that and nothing in the proposed provisions. So we'll look into that and if, if we do need to provide something separate by ordinance, we can make that change for council on first reading and otherwise we'll have the city clerk get back to you to answer that.
Cool, thank you. Yeah, I'm fine to move it forward, just clarifying that piece.
All right. Moving this to the agenda by acclamation. Next, we have the proposed changes to the food trucks and mobile food service vehicle program.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Describe this as well. This is not an ordinance change at this time or, or action item, but it's something that the city has been working with partners on and, and something that the city's been seeking input on, including from city council, but something we wanted to present at your committee of the whole tonight to talk about what the, what the discussion has been and, and where it's going from here. So currently the city has two sections within the city code that regulate the vending of food on sidewalks and on streets, particularly in the downtown area. Combined, they have the effect of prohibiting food trucks or mobile food vendors outside the hours of 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM. And they establish an administrative permitting program that does allow permits for those vendors between 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM in the, in the downtown area that's now administered by the parking authority. Those ordinances went into effect in, I think, 2013 and so have not been updated for a while. One of the motivating factors was to ensure that those mobile businesses did not compete with established businesses in structures in the downtown area. And so there's a, a map on the pages linked in your materials that shows these kind of spots where the parking authority will not issue permits, where they're near other food service businesses. As you all can understand, those have changed over time and so those don't really coordinate well, even if that's, that continues to be the purpose of the program with, with where we might want to issue those permits. These are all issues, I should say, that are identified in the first instance by the parking authority who administers the program and, and brought them to the, to the city staff to try to work on a solution. Another issue they've noted is that the, some of the vendors over time have, have equipment that, that may not be up to the standards they'd like to see in the downtown area or are not maintaining the premises where they vend in a sanitary condition. There's, there's grease associated with these operations and it isn't always cleaned up. There are, there are operators that don't necessarily have a, a mobile food vending operation, but maybe selling food out of standalone grills. And those are, are things that have become concerning to the parking authority managing the, the street areas really. So they convene a working group of city staff to look at how we can best manage these operations to provide an additional amenity to downtown while also supporting our existing businesses. We have the director of arts and culture, the parking authority director, our GIS staff working on mapping and other city representatives working on those proposals. So one thing they worked on was addressing standards for permitting and we've, we've sent out suggestions on those. And then substantively, what the working group proposed was to focus on creating an area where food truck vendors operate that might become more of a destination for downtown, looking mainly at the 200 block of High Street and Chancery Row around Courthouse Square in an effort to identify an area that wasn't served by existing businesses that may compete and might also provide a good venue in downtown. So that proposal was sent out to Main Street Morgantown to get input from downtown business owners, was delivered to mobile food vendors who have worked with the city on various events or venues also to get their input, and then also was sent to city council members for input. We've received some responses back from vendors on the program and provided this to the council as well, people who have kind of taken it as a serious opportunity to look at this and provide some feedback based on how they understand they operate within the program and that's, that's something we'll have to continue to look at. We don't have formal feedback yet from Main Street or participating downtown businesses. We did just send that to them at the very beginning of November, so it hasn't been a long time. We've been in contact with their director on following up to get that information. I think that's a pretty important piece of information to get, is this is a, really a downtown-focused program. So while the, the proposal ultimately should result in bringing a proposed ordinance changes to council to address how these restrictions on street use are placed in the code and, and likely also a separate specific mobile food vendor licensing program that the finance department and the fire marshal have been working on that, that fits these businesses better than what's being used currently and just make sure that if they need to be inspected by the fire marshal, there's a notice and that they do that so everything's safe. That's not in front of council right now because we still have some work to do on the, on the details and, and to get input. And kind of presenting this tonight is another opportunity to get some public attention and get some input. So anything you all gain from constituents and want to provide as well will be considered. The parking authority's timing concern with bringing this matter up earlier this year was that they are currently, as I understand it, issuing yearly permits for the vendors who occupy the nine or so spaces that vending is available. That's not prescribed by the ordinance and so what we plan to do in the interim is just to kind of shorten those permit times. We had looked in the proposal at, at monthly permits and think that we'll be able to manage that as well as impose those, those kind of health and safety rules on the vendors that do participate. The ones we put in the proposal are, are very similar to what we already require for outdoor dining areas in the downtown. And so they're, they're something that businesses can operate with and that should give us some accountability to make sure the streets are clean. So we'll plan to do that as an interim measure and, and then work on getting additional feedback to bring more long-term changes to council. If you all have any questions or suggestions, I think this is a good forum to talk about those as well, but that's all I had to describe.
Just for clarification, there's no action. All right.
That's correct.
So it looks like in the info you sent, there was one mobile food vendor that provided some info, Dave Sanders, Dog's Rob.
Yes.
And the three points that I took away from him were the timing of when it was available, we were proposing an earlier and shorter, so I think, well, about the same as earlier time period, and he was advocating for a later time of 11:00 PM to 3:00 AM and I think we were talking 9:00 or 10:00 to 2:00. So that was one.
Yeah, yeah, definitely true. And I think, you know, some of that consideration of earlier times came from our, our other staff who do work with mobile food vendors, saying many of them do not want to work those late night hours. The feedback we got, which was, was well-taken, as I said, is, is somebody who does operate in the current program and, and runs their business that way. So trying to, trying to coordinate those different interests.
Out of curiosity, because I would, if I'm a food truck vendor, I want 11:00 to 3:00 since everything closes at 2:00.
Yeah, I get the people coming out of the door.
I want, yeah, I want that food truck. Are they required to, they sign up, we tend to in 11:00 to 3:00, are they required to spend an extra hour?
No, they're not. Many of them don't operate at all the permitted times or days.
And we're talking Thursday through Saturday, right? I mean, Thursday and Friday, Saturday.
I think currently, yes.
And the other issue, so just to clarify that, and the other issue you pointed out was the 200 block seems to be closer to the bars, I'm sorry, the 400 block is closer to the bars, the 200 blocks further away. the bars, the 200 blocks further away, better foot traffic in the current location than the proposed location. And it's just pointing that out.
Yes, yes, exactly. And, and so, you know, again, some competing considerations there. If you want to identify something that's a, a separate area from those established businesses and can, can maybe provide a separate venue or attraction downtown, that's why staff were looking at the 200 block, but it's for exactly that reason, it's a, a separate area from where those established businesses are.
Give us a little more for you. If I'm not going this correct.
Could you, yeah, yeah. Wasn't thinking of looking.
I'm sorry if I'm not going this correct, but this is the first time I've ever been to a city council meeting.
Welcome, Corey.
Our director has asked me to come here and give.
Sitting quietly would have been the worst thing.
Our director has asked me, as somebody who works the night shift for the parking authority and is actually out there on the street dealing with the vendors and dealing with the entire situation regarding that, to speaking and my input. He felt it would be better for me.
I appreciate you saying it, but for the, for our benefit and also for our audience, identify who you are and what your position is.
My name is Corey Miller. I am an enforcement officer for the parking authority.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. But yes, our director thought it would be better for me to speak than for him because I have direct experience with it. The primary problems that I feel that we at the parking authority tend to have with the vendor program are all, revolve around the issue of sanitation with the trash that gets left behind or, you know, with grease being left in parking spaces or even on like the curb directly above the sidewalk. And I honestly don't know how the enforcement of that is supposed to go. I think under the current code, it is supposed to be handled by the police department, but with these being on Thursday, Fridays and Saturdays, which are the busier nights downtown, they generally tend to have better things to do than essentially issue a littering citation. And I don't know how that would be enforced in any new ordinance. Another thing that we tend to have issues with is because the vending is being done from parking spaces that are generally open to the public except for when they are reserved by these vendors, removal of vehicles. The parking authority is not able to tow off of the street without police department involvement. We have to actually call 911 center and request an officer to be sent out and so an officer actually has to come to remove the vehicle that might be in one of these spaces that a vendor has reserved. That is again, something that I think the police department has better things to do than to tow a vehicle from a parking space, especially when we as the parking authority, I think, should be able to actually do that. But I don't know what the reasoning behind not allowing the parking authority to do that is.
Corey, can I ask, what are, what is the process, like, if I were, if I were to park downtown, how would I know that that's a spot that's reserved for a food truck?
So with the spaces being where they are, they are a two-hour meter and we try to get bags placed over those meters that say, you know, parking at least two hours beforehand. Because of the issues that we have had with people being parked in those spaces, we on the night shift have actually started putting them on much earlier than what we are told to because of how, you know, people, even, even when we first put them on, like, we'd be standing right there right after putting it on and we could have somebody park there or try to park there right in front of us and argue with us when we try to tell them to move. So, you know, we do try to put them on even earlier. I think technically they're supposed to be put on at approximately 9:00 because of how the vending doesn't actually begin until 11:00. Generally, we try to put them on at about 7:00 instead just to try to make sure that we give as much ample time for anybody that may already be parked there or, you know, maybe showing up downtown to not park there. And we still have issues with that.
Is there a possibility of maybe painting them a different color as a warning that like Thursdays, Fridays and Saturdays, the yellow meters are?
That I don't know. That would be a question for our director. I do know that there's a possibility of adding signage to the meter poles. We have done that on Walnut Street on the 200 block because on Thursdays, Fridays and Saturdays, there's a new parking zone. And it, they do have signage that spells that out there as well as some meters on the 300 block. But yeah, the, the removal of vehicles and the garbage and, and just waste left behind tend to be our biggest problems just because removal of vehicles is very time consuming between having to call for an officer, if, if one is not available, then we have to wait for an officer to become available before they can get there and then they, once they get there, have to go through the tow rotation. And then it's, you know, there are times where you can be sitting there waiting for an hour or more for a tow truck even after possibly having to wait for a police officer to show up to begin the process. And for the trash, I understand that it's currently written into the code that I believe it's 50 feet around each area that they're supposed to be responsible for cleaning. And in some cases, some of them are better about cleaning up their area than others. But almost none of them actually bring their own trash receptacles. And so it ends up in the public receptacles and they overflow. One of them is directly abutting our parking lot there and we are constantly having to clean the trash out of the planter that it is right beside. There's a lot of overflow into the parking lot and onto the sidewalk. And so, like I said, those are the two biggest issues that I see us having. In broader scheme, if I'm allowed to speak to that, the health department certifications. We did observe numerous health code violations by most of the vendors. Some of them are much better than others, but even when we observe them and we try to report them to the health department, we are told that they cannot enforce it because they don't have anybody out. And so I don't see how that is going to be something that can be fixed, I mean, especially not by the city council, is it's a county thing, but I do believe it's something to be taken into consideration. Because if those types of violations can be enforced, if we don't have a way to enforce the sanitation of the general area, it becomes a larger problem.
So by moving, the, the, one of the proposals is that we would move where these would be located. Does, would that, is, does that help address any of the issues that you've talked about?
I think moving the, particularly moving them to the 200 block, I don't think that they would get business. I don't think that people are going to walk down that way. And it honestly, I don't think would actually fix any problems if they were getting business because they are still going to be in parking spaces, which they are still going to be most likely not bringing their own trash receptacles. They're still most likely going to be relying on the public receptacles. And I think it's just going to be moving the problem from one block to another.
Okay. So one thing I would think would be helpful is signage on these specific parking meters. It'd be cool if we could like paint them a specific color like you were saying and it should be on there at all, like, we shouldn't be bagging them. I, I think it's fine to bag them, but they're, what we should be doing is making sure it's very, very clear that you park here, you're going to tow.
I just think you're the red meters.
Yeah, I, I think there is, Ryan, is there some kind of standards for parking meters in terms of their color and stuff?
I mean, we have certain ways we use red or loading zones and green or, or something else and they're, they're marked for the, the one hour zone. But I think, I mean, the painting, the areas are a great idea. There are only nine defined areas currently or, or probably proposed or, or whatever we would end up doing, certainly markable. And, and I should say, the, you know, these enforcement challenges are real. There is a, I mean, there's, there's kind of a legal issue with towing. It's a state law and city code parallels it. Grant law enforcement agencies the option to have vehicles towed, but they can do that through contract and we, I don't think we need to have a police officer there. So we'll, we'll work with parking authority on, on that. They also, parking authority officers can issue litter citations and so we can, you know, we can do any training we need there. But, but really, the, the way we're addressing those issues with, with updates is, is, is just the permitting system. It is hard to kind of play whack-a-mole and, and so what you need to do and what we've done with our outdoor dining programs is if people are violating that, especially if they're violating it regularly, they don't have a permit to operate there anymore. That's the, that's the real way to do it. We'll have some insurance requirements and they will be required to provide their trash receptacles.
Yeah, my, my, before you even said that, my suggestion would have been, let's make sure that our parking authority be at the authority to cite, cite for litter. So I think that that's, that would help. In terms of, I know, I've seen in other cities, they have two separate permits, one that's where you have a food preparer and a food dispenser or something like that, where you bring food from off-site. Or you have, so there's two separate ones, right? It's two separate.
Sure.
Permits or licenses and one is for when you're preparing food and one is for where, when you're there, like you have fryers, you have grills, whatever, you're bringing hot food there and the one where you're bringing food that's already prepared.
Mm-hmm.
So I think maybe in that way, possibly if we made the fines or fee schedule or whatever different for each, for the two different ones, we may incentivize people bringing prepared food more and maybe that would help with at least a little bit of the grease and things like that issue. But I think, you know, ultimately that's, they should just not be allowed to do that. So.
Simple as that.
Yeah.
Enforcement.
Enforce.
I think this is a good discussion and certainly things that are coming forth are valuable, but on the other hand, I'm a little bit lost as to what we're, what we're going to do now. Are you going to give us an ordinance that addresses the immediate issues and then after that, continue the conversation with the various stakeholders and come with a more defined?
I, I think, if it's okay with council, a bit of the reverse. What the ordinances do right now is just limit these operations to certain permitted areas from 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM. And then they allow the city manager to adopt regulations to administer the program. The way the city's done that historically is have the parking authority administer it and they, they do that and they have commercial assistance memos out, they issue these permits and, and they designate the spaces and monitor them. What we're trying to do to address these immediate issues that the parking authority has identified is just kind of update those regulations, require different applications and rules for people who do get permits. Use the same basic areas, but not issue a permit for a whole year, just issue it for a month because the program's under review. And so we'll have in the rules of the program for people who do violate those rules, a way to, to enforce that. But those aren't currently in the ordinance, so they don't need to be changed by ordinance. If you prefer to have those in an ordinance before council, we could do that, but the larger, the substantive task for council is updating those ordinances to do these kind of licensing things that you're talking about as well as to kind of give guidance on where and when we want these to operate or what kind of flexibility you want the, the city manager's office or the parking authority to have in administering those programs to, to respond to need.
Just for my sake and clarity, what we're going to do is you're going to bring to us a suggestion of various changes or updates to an existing ordinance, which means that we're not looking at something brand new. But in the long term, you expect some ordinance change or some ordinance coming that perhaps we'll deal with broader issues like where these particular food trucks, vendors will be located and times and what happened?
That's right. Those are the things restricted by ordinance now. That's section 361.09 of the city code and then section 905.02 prohibits this vending outside of 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM in the downtown area as shown on a map. It does allow it for city events. And so in order to change that, city council would need to take action. So if, if there's a proposal to change the hours of the operating is allowed, that would be an ordinance for city council. And there is a proposal, there's a proposal that is being worked on by the finance department and fire marshal to change the licensing. So we have a specific license to these operation types that, that really meets their needs in the cities rather than designating them hawker peddlers.
I'm interested to see what the downtown business stakeholder feedback is.
Yeah.
I, I think we should also maybe in there require that they have their own trash receptacle. Maybe if we could figure, also figure out a way, if we put it in that one space, if we could figure out a way to provide them a place where this is where you go dump your trash at the end of the night.
Oh, yeah, that's a good idea. So we do have in the, in the regulations that we'd plan to use starting January 2025, a requirement that they provide their own trash receptacles.
Okay.
But we'll, you know, we'll update those to, they're in draft form for council, we'll update those to program documents and, and get them distributed as well. And we'll ask about a location to dump that trash. Downtown trash is a difficult issue.
Yes. Thank you for coming in.
Yeah, thanks, Corey.
It's really good to have your perspective, I appreciate it.
For sure.
Thanks.
We'll get you trained on how to write those litter citations. He's like, no, totally, I can do that. Downtown will be so clean.
All right. So no action on that one. The next we have is an ordinance amending city code section 305.04 to designate Raleigh Lane a one-way street. And Mr.?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to give a brief introduction and then if there are specific questions, turn that over to our director of engineering and public works who is here. So a number of months ago, there was a sinkhole that had occurred at the intersection of Raleigh Lane in Patterson. This was in a very large culvert that MUB operated. There's a stream that runs through there. So it was an emergency closure initially to address that sinkhole in that roadway. During the time of that fix, I think it was a little bit more involved than anyone had kind of expected, so that caused a little bit of a delay in keeping that area closed. It was really initially just immediately closed in the area of the sinkhole and what this was initially, essentially doing was causing traffic that was continuing to travel on what they used as Raleigh Lane was really pushing them into private commercial parking lots to continue driving either direction on that street. This area had been for several years looked at to see if what kind of pedestrian accommodations can be added to the roadway, but hadn't really gotten too far down the road with that design yet. While the road was closed, we looked at, we brought our, one of our on-call engineers out to look at this to see how can we, you know, can we accommodate any kind of improvement to pedestrians in this area with the vehicular traffic? During that time, it was, it brought to our attention that a section in the middle of Raleigh Lane is actually only a 12-foot wide right-of-way. And so just to put this into perspective, a typical parking spot is about eight feet wide. And so adding a, having two lanes of traffic in alternate directions in a 12-foot wide section of roadway was essentially caused. was essentially causing, in the areas that it could, vehicles to travel off of the public right-of-way onto private property, whether that be WBU's parking area. There's a section, a four-foot wide section that the county owns, a four-foot wide strip of land also on the Evansdale side. And then as you get where Kroger has a large access off of there, cars would be driving on the Kroger parking lot and then closer to Patterson on the Qdoba property line. And so as we were trying to look to see how to do this, it became very evident that within our legal right-of-way that we could not reopen the road in the same manner without acquiring additional right-of-way and making some improvements to that roadway to accommodate two-way traffic. So again, the road had been closed due to the emergency circumstances. While looking into improvements, we were made that closure. While that road was closed, we did bring in a number of the immediate users of the road, the county, the city, WBU, and I apologize when I see users, the adjacent property owners. Because essentially, again, the roadway was on these private properties. And we did, I believe, both the Fourth and Seventh Ward, council members and Council Hershberger as the representative of MUB, MUB Mountain Line, the Fire Department, and another, a number of other organizations to look at that. And different scenarios were discussed. Ultimately, what is in front of you and is being recommended is to turn that into a one-way road that would go from the Evansdale neighborhood to Patterson. This would allow for vehicular traffic to continue the entire length of that road. It would be an outlet for that neighborhood. And then once you got to the Patterson end, it would be a right turn only. That particular area, if you try to make a left off of Raleigh onto Patterson, not only are you crossing two lanes of traffic, that's also either a center turn lane where it goes both direction or the turn lane that would be turning left on University if you were traveling in that direction. But you'd have to cross three lanes of traffic to be able to make a left out of there, which is normally prohibited in most instances for safety reasons. So limiting that to a right turn only, but that would allow any individual that was coming from the neighborhood, Evansdale neighborhood, to at least get to Kroger or get out onto Patterson, turning right towards the hospital as needed. And, but otherwise, if they needed to make lefts, we generally would prefer them to do that at traffic signal-controlled intersections. So if they needed to get onto University towards Collins Ferry, going out at a light and traveling on University. So this would leave, I believe, two signalized intersections and two non-signaled intersections to get out of that neighborhood, going back into that neighborhood, depending on, let's say you're coming from Chick-fil-A. Instead of using Raleigh Lane as a cut-through to make the right and avoid the light, you would make a right at the light and then a right into the neighborhood. So trying to focus on rights are tend to be easier to make than lefts, faster to make. But, you know, trying to prioritize traffic that is able to get out of there while still accessing maybe the neighborhood amenities. And even with those changes to one-way, there's still likely additional right-of-way that will need to be acquired, particularly if any kind of pedestrian accommodation is intended to be made. But I don't know if you have anything to add on top of that. That's what is in front of you today.
Exactly. Emily said, you know, originally it was closed with MUB. We wanted to try to kind of capitalize on that, why it was closed and kind of look at a plan. We had identified three user groups there. And we met with the first user group. And in that meeting, we realized the project was more complicated than we anticipated. So we had this flow down. Currently, MUB is going to be opening that road back up likely tomorrow. They had prepped it for paving, I think, yesterday or maybe even last week, and they're going to be paving tomorrow. We're going to follow up with that once they pave it. And if this moves forward, we'll move through marking it as such. Again, this is, you know, a project that's been talked about for many, many years. It's every, every plan that comes up, this has been identified as a crucial link between the neighborhood, but also both for pedestrians and vehicles. And, you know, there's a huge amount of both there. And so, you know, again, as we're putting this down, you know, to deal with, we are looking at the larger plan in that. I've put in my budget request this year, funds, requesting funds to look at a design for this and any construction. I think we pushed it all in one year. I had it separated out in years, but I think we pushed it all in one year. So this one-way closure that we're proposing right now is just temporary. And the only reason why we're not doing is the 90-day temporary ones because it's going to take us a little longer than 90 days if this does get funded in the next fiscal year or two. So like Emily said, we looked at it. And to open it back up to two-way traffic and have the pedestrian that walk through there, we can't do it because we really only have a 12-foot space on our property. There are sections out there that, you know, if you're out there and you're looking around, you see a 20-foot roadway, but most of that 20-foot is on private property. So the road has kind of widened and meandered over the years and it is kind of this mess right now out there with, you know, WBU's entrances being, you know, one whole length and Kroger's, you know, entrance being massive and Qdoba's entrance being the width of the, you know, the length of the road. So one of our goals is to try to manage those accesses too and hopefully clean this area up a little bit. But again, this right now will just help us get to that point where we can, you know, have a safe passage for pedestrians and vehicles while we're planning a larger project. Questions?
I have, yeah, what else?
She's scared.
I want to hear what you say.
I know Jenny's jumping it a bit. In terms of acquiring the right-of-way, do we have cooperative?
Partners?
Partners, thank you.
Like I said, we identified three groups. We met with the first group, which was the county, WBU, Fire. And the adjacent properties, the county has a four-foot strip that they're willing to partner with us on. We actually own a section down near Qdoba. There's a section in the middle that's really going to be the concerning area where we're going to recount to the proprietors, either Kroger's or Qdoba, whoever owns those properties. And then W, I think W is willing to work with us too as well. So there's just one little pinch point there where I think we, you know, we haven't reached out to those. That was, they were identified as the second user group we were going to reach and we never made it to that point. But, you know, if we want to do anything, we'll have to reach out to those groups and look at acquiring a section of property through that area.
I hate to be the person who always brings up budget, but this is within our budget to convert this over in terms of making it two ways eventually?
You know, that's what we're going through the budget cycle right now. And it's a request that I put in there. So as we go through this, we'll see if it can be funded, if it can't be. If it can't be, then we'll look at trying to do grants or things like that to try to.
We're not looking to a bridge to nowhere, but kind of, you know.
No. Councilor Kowicki, your question about is this in the budget, I would say because we're, the pinch point is on private property. It depends on private commercial property. It depends on how much people want, they think their property is worth.
Beginning section that we would be acquiring.
If it's commercial property, I think that they should be looking at the value of their commercial enterprise.
And the piece of property that's in question is really an unusable section of property.
There you go.
Yeah. It doesn't, it doesn't benefit the business. It doesn't add to the business.
Or detract if we take it.
Or detract, yeah.
That's good to know.
We certainly have other streets with pitch points in them though, two-way traffic. I mean, down in Saberton where we blocked off the little Hardee's connector and now everyone has to go in behind, by Liberty Tax there. It's definitely, it's two-way, but only room for one.
Yeah, I think the thing is with this particular instance, it's a much longer section. So in that particular area, I believe it's a culvert that is kind of restricting that. And so you can easily see traffic coming and going. And this area is a much longer route. And if, to keep people on actual public right-of-way as opposed to, you know, encouraging them to drive on private property, if you were to actually put a barrier or a guardrail or something like that, but also the number of side access points off of those, it just can, it's hard to see that full length because it also kind of like humps up and over. So to kind of control that, it can be a little difficult. So it's not out of the question that it goes back to two ways. It's just, given the current status of the road, you know, without suggesting and encouraging people to drive on public property, which I think would be ill-advised by our legal counsel. It essentially, to go back to two ways wouldn't really be feasible under the current right-of-way limitations.
Just one last thing for me. My understanding is that emergency services were concerned about the access to this road also?
We had John Lindley, who was the acting captain at the time, meet with us out there. And he was willing to work with us however we needed to. He said he would, his trucks are, you know, they're big. They have loud sirens. People get out of their way. And so whether it's one way or this way, they can go up to one way the wrong way if they need to or, you know. And again, as we were looking at designing whatever, we would make sure it was designed for outrides.
Damien, that 12-foot pinch point is obviously a dangerous section and it's, it would require, I'm looking at the map and I was there with the user groups, their stakeholders. And it would require Qdoba and Kroger to give some right-of-way. And then it would require a retaining wall to be built for quite an amount of width to create an effective two-way traffic. So my question is, could we reopen that one way as proposed and then look at the two rights-of-way and a budget? What would the cost be to establish enough of a width to provide a two-way street again?
For a two-way, you need probably at least, you know, 18 feet plus, you know, a five-foot sidewalk. And so that's 23 feet.
And if you've got to have a retaining wall and any kind of grading.
So how, how many total?
I think you would easily be looking at 25 to 30-foot wide right-of-way in the section that you would need a retaining wall that there's grade differences. If it's flat, you probably could reduce it to 23.
Yeah, you could do, you could do nine-foot lanes in a low-speed area like that where you're not having, if you were moving it out of the bigger street, you'd want, you know, 10-foot lanes at minimum. But a small street, you could get nine-foot lanes. But you still need, if you're looking at a sidewalk, you know, you'd have to find the sidewalks.
That's how you get the 23 feet?
Yes.
Nine plus nine plus five?
Is a sidewalk required right there through that stretch?
No, it's not required, but there is a huge amount of pedestrians.
I know, I know, I know.
So we're trying to get, to separate those two, you know, because currently, you know, every time we've been out there, we've been out there many times looking at it, you know, we're standing in the road, you know, we have tons of pedestrians coming by. We have tons of vehicles coming by us. And, you know, even with us, you know, a large group of people standing there, we still have cars that zip past us like we weren't there at all, you know. So it is, you know, it's, it's a, it's a busy area.
Yeah.
It's a busy area. It is.
How could we fit in some kind of a workshop with the neighborhood where they could hear the exit data and any other information that you have and see a detailed map just to be included in the process? Even if it's extremely unlikely that we would end up with 23 feet of right-of-way. I think it would help for them to see, could be onsite, could be they have a place that they meet, could be in the neighborhood. It just seems like there are several people that couldn't be here tonight that just, and obviously they, they didn't, I can't see the whole audience, but I don't believe they stayed. It would just be nice to have some interactions so that you all heard their questions and could answer back and forth and like, you know, like a workshop type of thing with a map and.
And that's what, you know.
Asking questions.
As we, you know, if this project does get funded in the next fiscal year, you know, that's one of the things we'll do. We'll work with, you know, we'll start working with all those stakeholders at different levels through the project. You know, we'll have, you know, initial get comments, you know, we'll take those comments, put together options, take back those comments or those auctions and look at what works. Would also look at, you know, budgets, you know, if, what is the cost of this option? What's the cost of this, you know, option two, three, four, whatever? And so, yeah, I mean, I think that there definitely is a process where the neighborhood will be involved. It's just how this project goes forward and how it works.
And Deputy Mayor, if I may.
Do you guys hear me?
We can now.
Okay, all night long, I've really struggled to hear anything to me. It's, I don't know why my computer's like this. So I'm not sure I've heard everything I need to hear, but I, this is, this whole area, I've traveled it for 20, 30 years. And this has been a mess over there. And what my complaint is, is I don't understand why you guys put the roadblocks in front of Kroger's, but then a week later you move it back and you block access off to Kroger's anyway. And it makes no, who's doing that? Is it the city? Is it MUB? Who's doing that?
So to address that, originally, MUB, when they first started work, they blocked it off at, and then people were traveling around them onto Qdoba's parking. And so they were, they were kind of interfering in their work. They were using private property to access. So MUB asked us to move those barriers back to help protect their workers and help, you know, make sure that people weren't driving on private property to access this.
Right, I understand that.
Yeah.
But what I don't understand is when there hasn't been any workers there, you guys have said, the sinkhole is in the front in the frontal part of this area. And there was no work being done beyond the Kroger's access. No workers up there. All the workers were always in the front. And then they continued to move it back, blocking access to Kroger's. And I think what was upsetting people is they kept moving the pipe, the barriers and blocking off access. When, and then the following week, you'd move them back up or two weeks later or a month later. And to be honest with you, it's, I don't get it myself. And I use that road every day. Work, I use it. In my private life, I use it. I shop there. This has been a huge problem for the Third Ward and Fourth Ward. And it, I don't know, I just feel like we could, we could have done better on this. And I do think that you guys need to put together some kind of forum so the neighborhood, and I would even have some of my, I know a lot of my board would like to be involved in as well. Because that's an access point for them, for Kroger's. But I don't know, I just, I feel like this process has been, I don't know. It's just not been the best.
The initial repair was a response to an emergent situation. So that's why there was no initial kind of pre-planning or pre-discussion. It was an emergent situation. We responded to while that was being addressed. The work that was being done was encouraging public traffic that's supposed to be on a public road of right-of-way onto private property. And so that's why additional barriers were put up. And so given the limitations of that area is why some of the changes in how those barriers were put up. that area is why some of the changes in how those barriers were put up. One of the things we're trying to do now is prioritize being able to open that road to vehicular traffic in some way, knowing that the current limitations that are existent, that I don't think that the city was fully aware of prior to this, a response to this emergent situation, is to temper, or to open this up to allow vehicular traffic in one direction that allows for vehicles to continue operating. That could be done essentially as soon as MUB is completed doing their repair work, utilizing pavement markings, signage. And so, that's something that we can immediately put into place to reestablish at least a one-way traffic out of there, and then we can work towards the long-term solution of either seeing if there are willing property owners to, to work with us on acquisition of additional right-of-way to reestablish a two-way street, or to create at least a better one-way street that controls access a little bit better in and out of those parking lots, to create a safer environment to ensure that you could put pork chops at the end of the road to ensure that there's only a right turn out of that onto Patterson, and if possible, to add pedestrian accommodations. But again, if there are willing property owners that are willing to donate or, or sell for something that the city can afford with the work that would need to go into being able to reestablish that as two-way, that can all be worked on. That's just not something that can be done immediately once MUB's work is done.
Oh, ask the neighborhood.
I, I understand that.
Is your meeting on Wednesday?
It, but for now, could you at least have them stop moving the barriers where you block? One week you have access to Krogers, then a week later, and I don't see anybody working on it, just leave the access at least in the Krogers until we figure out a solution for those people. Because I know a lot of elderly people and seniors use that route because they don't want to go onto Patterson. But, you know, I keep hearing this as an accident site, but if you look at MECA's records, there's only been three accidents, I think, if I recall, in the past five years at that exact spot. So, and it's very easy to find if we go back to our MECA records.
So, looking at Chrysler, we.
I'm just asking, I'm just asking, and my constituents are asking, to please leave the access open to Krogers and not put it all the way up the alleyway like you have them doing, until this is figured out. That way, they could at least have access to Krogers. I understand blocking off the front part where the sinkhole is.
Yeah, and the neighbors, the neighbors said they don't go down there and turn left because that would be too dangerous.
It is too dangerous. They're, they don't want to be in that.
Blocking that is smart.
Yeah, and not only that, Patterson's one of, I think Patterson's one of the most traveled roads in the entire state, and it's highly trafficked. But just leave it open for these people. That's all I'm asking.
So, there, it's opening up tomorrow, is that, okay.
The last few months has just been.
Yeah.
It's opening up tomorrow?
Yeah. It can open back up tomorrow with additional signage to control traffic flow. What we have to be very cautious of is when any kind of work is being done, construction or otherwise, and you'll see this with all road projects, whether they're city or state, you cannot divert the flow of traffic onto public property. So, while people may be traveling down Raleigh Lane to go to Kroger, if they're used to traveling down Raleigh Lane to make a right onto Patterson, and our work allows them to, or how we have our barriers set up allows them to drive far enough that they can either get to Kroger or get to Kadova, and they're just cutting through that parking lot to make the right, we have to be very cautious about how we set up our work zones to not encourage vehicular traffic from using private property as a cut-through.
That's understandable, understandably.
And, and so, that's, that's what we've been trying to balance all along. But, we are trying to work on a plan to reopen it in some fashion the best way we can, both with a short-term immediate response and a long-term response.
Again, I ask the neighbors that are in attendance, do you have your neighborhood meeting next Wednesday? It says first Wednesday of the month.
Yeah, that's not accurate. We haven't been meeting for a while. We lost our president. The neighbors are pretty motivated. I think if I emailed them, they would be.
Do you have a place to meet?
They usually meet at the, the, with addresses, but there's a little church there that's for students. But, I don't know, I mean, I'm not sure what minority meeting will be, but we can communicate and get someone to set up. I think they would need more than me.
I guess my thing is I would like to see.
I can't, I can't hear that last bit if someone would.
So, Jenny, we were asking the people, because the, the people here addressing Raleigh Lane are still here, and the mayor had asked if they were having a meeting next week. They said their neighborhood group is no, is not really meeting, but that they, they, there are highly motivated member, I'm trying to.
Yes.
Not butcher, highly motivated members.
They would meet.
Yeah, so that they, and that they would try to set up a meeting. Do you know where they used to meet, Jenny? They said a.
They're, the Allen First of all Hall and the area that has all the, all the stuff to handle in it.
We've met there, haven't we?
You guys get that together. Can you include me in that, please? Because I know there's people in my ward.
If you could just email all of council, that'd be great. All of our emails are on, are on the website. That would be great.
Just, I'm sorry to kind of bring this to some sort of finality.
Sorry.
My understanding is that we're opening this up tomorrow.
MUB's going to be out for paving tomorrow. I don't know if it's going to be opened up tomorrow, but it's going to be completed and paved and have the ability to open up. I don't know if MUB's going to leave it as tomorrow.
And the goal would, we're just, thank you. So, it's open tomorrow, and it's free for all until we decide what to do with it.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Worries me about liability, but okay.
Well, we're trying to come up with a plan.
Yeah, no, I understand. I do, and I appreciate your dilemma. And what we're talking about is the one-way that flows from, if I'm not mistaken, Birch Street to Patterson?
Evansdale's Drive to Patterson.
Okay, Evansdale Drive to Patterson, all right.
Yes.
Which allows the neighborhood and then Councilman Michael's neighborhood to cut through that neighborhood to get to Kroger.
And when we do this, if we do, it'll require an ordinance for us to declare that street one-way, and we will sign it correctly so that it can be displayed in a manner that is easily perceived.
Yes.
Okay. Move to the agenda?
Please. Do you have anything else?
Can you, can you say what Bill said one more time? I have like.
Bill, Bill had made.
Where I cannot quite hear what's being.
Bill had made a motion to move it to the agenda. This would require two readings?
The ordinance would, yes.
It requires what?
Two readings. And after it opens, we'll be basically into a student holiday, so during the time of that two readings, the traffic will be limited, so that if we were to meet with the neighborhoods in between the two readings.
We can reach out.
So, say we, say we tried to schedule a meeting, say, I don't know what Damien's availability, but say on Wednesday of next week, so that people could just see what we're talking about.
They had mentioned that a week would be too short of time. But I would ask if, because.
We will coordinate with the neighborhood to see if we can get a scheduled meeting in between, but our, our goal would be to open it up as soon as we can, and our recommendation is to, when we reopen that, and through this process, turn it one-way, at least for now, as this ordinance is being proposed to make it one-way. An ordinance can always be updated to remove it should we get to a point where we can make it two-way once again.
Okay. So, what you're saying is that when we reopen this eventually, in the near term, we're going to sign it as one-way?
That would be our recommendation, yes.
And we'll have a discussion about options, possibilities with the neighborhood?
Yes.
Okay. Let me also add, thank you both for all your work with this. And thank you to the neighborhood for being patient with us. And sitting through our meeting. Yeah, that's dedication. And.
It's more than like, well, you're welcome back.
And while I'm busy throwing out thank yous, thank you, Bill, for summarizing this last item. So, Bill made a motion to the agenda. Brian City agrees, second acclamation.
Yes.
Moves it to the agenda. Somebody who would just be so kind is to read under all my notes and scribble.
What are you looking for?
The executive session.
The West Virginia State Code 6-9A-4V12, to discuss, protected by attorney, a client, client privilege.